All right, looks like we have a quorum. Uh, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order here. It's five thirty-four. Uh, Clark, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Budge?
Yeah.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Here.
Councilmember Sander?
Sure.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Here.
Mayor Gatewood will be absent.
Okay. That will move on to item two. Uh, Clark, can you, uh, please read, uh, the, um, television announcement?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, August nineteenth at nine AM and Monday, August twenty-third at six PM. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within forty-eight hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. So we'll go on to item three, and, uh, only because I can only see so many people in this room right now, um, I'd ask our city manager to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Following that, I'd ask people to remain standing that are in the, that are in the, uh, chambers. Um, and today we will have an invocation by Dr. Dan DeShong with the River City Christian Church. So with that, Cyrus, if you would, and I'm gonna turn off my camera so that you don't have to stare at my leg.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stacy, do we have Dr. DeShong with us?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Okay.
I wanna make sure my Zoom unmute button is off today.
We, we can hear you, sir.
Great, thank you. Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we are just so grateful and thankful for all you do for us, for blessing our city, blessing our leadership. We ask you to be with us tonight as, uh, the issues are discussed. I pray specifically for the health of our leadership and their family, and the health of our, uh, our city members, uh, around the area. We just lift this up and give you all the praise and honor in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to, uh, presentations, and our first presentation looks like it's going to be on our Utility Box Art Wrap Program, and we've got, uh, Daniel to give us a presentation.
Hi, can you hear me and see me?
Uh, yep.
Perfect. Well, thank you all. Uh, Stacy would have been here. She's encountering some difficulties with the airlines. I think she's stuck somewhere in Texas tonight. But, uh, so anyway, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Daniel Leonardi, Community Enhancement and Investment Management Technician. And I'm going to go over the results of the Utility Box Art Wrap Program and show you some of the wonderful art pieces that the local artists have, have done for us. Just a moment. Okay, so here's the agenda for tonight. I'm gonna briefly go over some of the background, the process behind the selection of the boxes, and we'll see the boxes themselves. So as you might remember, the Art Strategic Plan was developed and adopted in December of twenty nineteen, based on direction from the city council and input from stakeholder organizations. The program was identified in the plan, and so it was developed with the help of the community and funding from the, uh, Community Enhancement Fund as part of the Arts and Public Places allocation. So also part of the strategic plan, the formation of the Art Stakeholders Group was identified as a near-term action. The advisory group was formed in early twenty twenty, is made up of representatives from the community. The stakeholder group developed the selection criteria and the details of the program. In August of twenty twenty, uh, we released a call for artists, and we received a hundred and nineteen applications. The advisory group reviewed each eligible application, and based on their feedback, twenty-six art pieces featuring twenty artists were selected. Each artist received seven hundred and fifty dollars for each art piece that was selected. Uh, this program wouldn't be possible without a number of partners from our community. SMUD let us use ten of their boxes, ten of the thirty structures. The Art Stakeholders Group provided the direction and reviewed each piece, like I mentioned. Uh, Cheryl Gleason provided some additional insight and helped us get the word out. Rancho Cordova Arts helped get the word out, too, and many of its members were also selected artists. Uh, Paul Yonker and his team at Inner West helped with the early stages of the program, and Pro-Raps is the Rancho Cordova business that ultimately printed and wrapped the boxes themselves. All right. So as you can see from this map, potential art box locations are found throughout Rancho Cordova. While narrowing the list of boxes down, a variety of things were looked at, including, uh, the overall visibility, traffic, whether that be by person or by car or by bike, and proximity to the art block area. Um, artists were not required to sp- to specify a preferred box location, but they were encouraged to consider the context of the location and describe how a proposed artwork responds to that location. So here are the locations that were actually wrapped. Uh, many of the art pieces submitted for consideration did not identify a preferred location. After the twenty-six pieces were identified, uh, the box locations were assigned. There was some intentionality about where each piece was assigned. For example, if we had a bicycle theme, it was placed near a bicycle path. If the artist said, uh, "I want it to be near a park or a school," we listened and, and, uh, did so. At the direction of the Art Stakeholder Advisory Group, we spread them out across Rancho Cordova to beautify multiple neighborhoods and not just, uh, specific ones. Uh, this is actually a screenshot from the interactive map that is available on the city's website. It'll let you scroll around, see, uh, pictures of each box, and you can also view them by the artist. Okay, and now the moment you've been waiting for, uh, a video to show each individual piece is also available on the website. But in order to, uh, for the sake of time, we're gonna avoid the video, skip the video, and I'll just give you a brief slideshow about each of the boxes that were wrapped. Okay, so first up, we have Eric Hosino. Oh, sorry. Um, he says that the box resembles an old-time, uh, sh- uh, safe. So he went with that and thought he'd make one with, with masked bandits, as he called them. Michelle Scott is a Rancho Cordova resident. Uh, this design depicts, uh, colorful river rocks and wildflowers along Rancho Cordova's American River Parkway.
That's one of my favorites back there. It's so, it's so obvious and stunning in that location.
At Coloma and Red Area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with David, although I like the masked bandits, but I agree with David.
So Linda Nunez, she was, uh, selected for two pieces that were actually placed right next to each other. Uh, this first one is, uh, inspired by many things, including some childhood memories, dreams, and the love of the outdoors. Uh, Linda, of course, is a Rancho Cordova resident herself and a member of Rancho Cordova Arts. This is in the Anatolia neighborhood. Here's the other one. With a little bird.
Good question. I mean, I really like it, but like, the, couldn't we change the location of the bird so it actually, we can actually see it versus the numbers?
Yeah.
The, the art, that's a good question. Uh, the art wa- and locations were... Let me rephrase. So we aren't allowed to wrap over the numbers of each box, and unfortunately, there's no standard location as far as where stickers are or where handles are. Um, it's just a unfortunate coincidence that it happens with, with Linda's piece here.
Yeah, 'cause like this one, you could reduce the height and it would have worked perfectly.
Right, so I can certainly look into that as an option. Let me, uh, I'll come back to that. Thank you. So Sabrina Abbott's piece, uh, she's also a resident. Her piece represents open wrapping paper and bows creating an abstract image of color. Coloma and vehicle.
Yeah, the artists in the group have to understand some of these.
What was that series? Sorry.
No, I, I can understand the flowers and the birds, but, you know, I don't have the vision to understand. Looks pretty.
So Michael Mikalon here, he, uh, has three boxes, uh, three of his were selected. This first one is illustrations of birds with human characteristics. The second of Michael's at Canyonlands and Preserve Way, uh, is actually an original watercolor at the Bear Valley Reservoir in the Sierras. Tabitha Jensen, a Rancho Cordova resident and member of Rancho Cordova Arts. Her piece features little playful and mischievous spirits, as she called them.
So that, that's an example, uh, the image there on the right. There are additional utility boxes just adjacent to this. And, uh, as much as I enjoyed seeing those go up, my fir- one of my first thoughts was, why didn't we extend that onto the adjacent utility boxes? My guess is they're not SMUD. Uh, they belong to perhaps the city or some other entity.
So, and... Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
But that's something I think we, we should consider, because if we came back and wanted to wrap the ones on the right, you know, would it be in conflict with what's already there? Um, or could you perhaps, I don't know, spin it around a hundred and eighty degrees and apply it to the, to the adjacent boxes as well?
Those are, uh, some good ideas. We're gonna, I'll mention this later, but we were gonna come back in, uh, September timeframe to discuss, uh, further, um, allocations of funds for future ideas, so that's definitely could be one of them. Um, about fifty percent, uh, let me rephrase that, ten, only ten of these boxes are SMUD boxes. The remainder are city-owned utility boxes.
Right.
So let's go forward. Uh, we have Tiana...
So what kind of boxes are, are city-owned? What kind of utility is city-owned utilities?
Like, traffic, traffic utility boxes.
Ah, okay, makes sense.
So here is Tiana. I'm sure you can realize why, uh, this theme was put where it was, Coloma and Chase. Uh, Tiana Ouding is one of our two student artists. Her father Greg was inducted to the, into the twenty-twenty Rancho Cordova Sports Hall of Fame, so she was inspired to, uh, do a, a themed box thing tribute to, to the players at Cordova High School, basketball players. Dinny Wellman, Rancho Cordova Arts member. Uh, this is a dream sequence with a mo- motivational saying of, "Be bold and go through the door into your dreams." At Bear Hollow in Zinfanville. Steven Williams. Uh, this piece features a contrast of organic elements and the industrial space embedded within, as in inside the box itself, along, uh, this photo drive. Rick Sloan, a member of the Art Strategic Plan Group, as well as a member of Rancho Cordova Arts. Uh, this is a whimsical abstract piece combining the style of two influential artists. Billy Cassis is our second student artist. Uh, this piece was inspired by Lake Matoma and alongside outdoor recreational scenes that balance, and I quote, "balance nature and urban energy." Rigo Aliva here, Sunrise Boulevard and Douglas Road. Uh, Rigo is an art teacher at Cordova High School. Uh, this is a Frida Kahlo piece that represents the beauty of life and death.
That one was a difficult one for me to get, but it's got birds and skulls and Frida Kahlo, so, um, I would like to talk to Rigo to see what it actually means.
I picked up on the Frida Kahlo part of it.
That's the only thing I picked up on, right?
Yeah, and it was, it was some sort of modern take on that, is what I saw. I really liked it, so I thought it was cool.
Yeah, no, it is cool. I, 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 I mean, there's probably a deeper meaning to it that I would like to know what it is.
And I think he, in his application, I think he also talked about, uh, the circle of life. I don't know if you quite see that in there, but, but that is, uh, what he had said in his application.
Okay.
So we have Dedret Trudeau, uh, Sunrise Boulevard and Sunrise Gold Circle Park Drive area. Uh, this is a nod to current social movements, a symbol of peace, unity, and equality. Here is Michael's third piece. Um, this is a children's book-style illustration depicting river life.
Is that in front of Carver?
This is alongside Lincoln Village Park.
Okay, on the Lincoln Village Park side, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
John Smith is a Rancho Cordova resident. Uh, this design was originally a painting on paper that resembles forms of the, uh, American River. Emily Goldhan, uh, member of Rancho Cordova Arts. This is across the street from Mitchell Middle School. "Go Ride a Bike" inspires people to do the best for their bodies, minds, and environment. Rosa Cruz, "Fusional Diversity" is what, is what she calls it, uh, inspired by the social diversity and inclusion that we see and enjoy in our neighborhoods. Sid Wellman, this piece is at Lincoln Village and Bradshaw Road. Uh, he is a Rancho Cordova Arts member, and his application said that this is a visual and fun graphic. Maggie Galgelmann, uh, this is Cordova Road and Cordova Lane. Uh, this is the first of her pe- two pieces. Um, this one depicts the natural beauties of Northern California. Cassandra Burgess, Folsom Boulevard and Don Juan. Uh, this is the, another two be- two-box piece. It was created after her visit to Africa and inspired by the amazing power of a stare. This is Maggie's second piece, uh, also inspired by the beautiful landscapes of Northern California. We're almost finished. Marcia Mason, this piece, Sierra Glen Way and Ron Bowdery Drive. Uh, this is intended to deepen people's sense of place in Rancho Cordova. Marcia is a member of Rancho Cordova Arts, and she's honoring the American River here. This is Eric's second piece. To the artist, the crow is a bird that represents equal parts nature and city, just like Rancho Cordova. And finally, this is Cassandra's second piece. It allows the abstraction of geometric shapes of the lion to wrap around the box, and it, she matched it with, uh, some trees on the smaller box. And that concludes those, those boxes. Um, real quick, the next step for this program, uh, like I mentioned before, we're gonna come back in the September timeframe and discuss, um, the future call for artists, that's what the plan is going forward. Throw some ideas around. And that's it.
So, I have, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, hang on. Let's first, um, Stacy, do we have any, uh, public comment on this item?
It's, it's a presentation. Um, doesn't mean we can't, but, uh, I don't have a public speaker card for that item, and there's no hands that are raised.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Linda.
So, um, Daniel, um, it was my understanding, there's something like sixty-nine different locations that are actually approved?
There were, I don't have the number on hand, but there are quite a number of locations, yes. Is your question, why didn't we wrap all of them?
Um, I'm sorry, I'm, uh, you froze up, and I missed the answer of how many boxes are approved.
The answer was yes.
The answer is yes. There are, there are somewhere up there, upwards there.
Yeah, so if we got a hundred and nineteen applications, um, one would have thought we might be able to use more boxes at the outset.
Possibly. Um, the budget's limited, uh, to the amount that we were able to wrap.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. I understand. Um, and, uh, so my only, my only concern is that, um, it seems like with a hundred and nineteen different applications, rather than actually use more than one from each individual artist, that we might have done thirty individual artists as opposed to only twenty artists.
Sure, we could consider that for, for the next round, absolutely. The criteria for, each applicant was allowed up to three applications, each artist. Um, that was criteria determined by the Art Stakeholder Group, but we can certainly consider that for, uh, future iterations of the program.
Just in terms of spreading it out, you know?
Totally.
And, and I do, um, I do understand everybody's comments. I've got two or three of these that are really, really terrific, like Siri, they are, David, they really, uh, they really appeal to me, and, and some of them just whoosh. So, you know, artist subjected, that's the way it goes. Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Any other?
The plan is, the plan is when you come back in September, we will be going forward with additional boxes.
So we're going to discuss if that is indeed the council's plan, or if there's some sort of mixture of another program that might be thrown out, what, what we're gonna work with, with, um, the next fifty thousand dollar budget.
Okay.
So, good question. Uh, for the next time...
Go ahead, Terry.
Yeah, sorry. So the next time this happens, um, how about a poll? You know, you, you post all of this online and then see the ones that get the most likes or hits to be posted on, um, you know, these boxes. That way we can see all the art.
Some people were, um, of the hundred and nineteen, those are not all eligible. I would say approximately ten to fifteen were, I don't recall the exact number, but were ineligible. Uh, that could be due to, um, late submittals or to, uh, more often than not, it was someone outside of, 'cause we wanted to keep it local, so we limited it to only Sacramento and surrounding counties, uh, where the artists would reside, and we had applicants from Los Angeles, San Diego. So that was another reason why, uh, we didn't see them all, yeah.
Okay.
Not reading my fine print.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Fair enough, yeah, but yeah, I would love to see all the art and their explanations, and that would be better than TikTok.
We can talk about that, certainly.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to congratulate you guys just on a, a, a very nice job. It's very well done. Uh, it's nicely executed. I don't see any sort of like errors in application out there in the art, and also, I don't see anything that my eye would immediately say, oh, that's low quality. You know, everything there is of a certain standard that even if I don't personally appreciate every bit of it, you can say, boy, someone really knew what they were doing when they put that together, as opposed to, you know, me spending fifteen minutes with, I don't know, photoshopping some photographs and slapping something together, right? Um, everything was very nicely done, so I think that's a very important thing in, in this kind of art. I know that when we first started undertaking the idea of murals on walls, one of the big concerns actually from the art community was, you wanna be careful about how you do this because you don't want to look, uh, I don't know what the proper word is, cheap or po- or, or poorly executed. You don't wanna look messy.
Amateurish.
Amateurish when it, when it's finally executed. Yeah, you wanna have a certain, uh, standard, and you wanna be very conscious of your surroundings. So I think you achieve that. Uh, they're very, they're very well done. With that one exception of when there are neighboring boxes, I feel like we ought to extend what we've got onto that box. Or, uh, you know, there's one opportunity, which I happened to see today, where you've got a utility box, like a, a big one, I think it might be regional transit, and literally in front of it are five or six more little ones altogether. So that's like a unique opportunity. I don't know. In my, in my mind, I'm thinking, ooh, this is a garden scene, and these are all individual plants in front of it.
David, this is, this is, uh, make way for ducklings.
Something like, something really cool like that you could do.
Well, thank you for that feedback.
So, uh, Daniel, are you going to, um, I realize that this was a staff report, so it's, it's a public document, but are you going to, uh, ke- start keeping a list somewhere on the city website of where the locations are and who the artist was and the information you read to us?
Absolutely. So right now, that interactive map is sort of fulfilling that purpose. Um, it has the pictures and it has the map that we can simply add to, and, and that would grow, um, over time.
But we just, we don't want it to, we don't want people to have to remember when you made the staff report in order to access.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's gonna be on, it'll be on the website long term, yes.
So there's an interactive map on our website now?
Correct.
Okay. And as we add more of these, we would add to that website.
Good point.
Uh, yeah, I think my colleagues kinda said it all. Um, I'd read there's some that I like more than others. Um, I, I'd probably say if there was any kind of feedback, no- nothing negative, but, um, I'd rather see more depictions of sites within the city than somewhere else outside of the city. Um, but, you know, somebody wants to paint a picture half dome, I'm not against it, I guess. Um, anything else for staff? Hearing none, we'll move on to item five point two. Uh, thank you, Daniel. Uh, we'll move on to item five point two, and we'll have, uh, Brenda Roach come up to share some employee milestones and anniversary presentations. Brenda in the chambers? Nope, there she is, in her office.
Hi, good evening, Vice Mayor Terry, council members and staff. Brenda Roach, Human Resources Manager for the city. I am happy to share with you this evening that we have three team members who have reached ten and a fifteen-year service milestones with the city of Rancho Cordova. As an organization, we feel it's important to recognize our employees as they reach these major career milestones. Our success at the city is directly attributed to the commitments and valuable contributions of our staff. So it is with great pleasure that I have the opportunity to introduce Ashley Downton. Ashley has been serving the Rancho Cordova community in the Communication and Public Affairs Department for the past ten years. Working alongside city team members and partners, Ashley has hosted many successful events like our city milestone birthday celebration, Mather Veterans Village dedication event, and the Amgen Tour of California. Ashley is a talented writer who is passionate about building the city's media relation program to showcase our city's stories regionally and beyond. Thank you, Ashley, for all that you do to make our community shine bright. Cyrus, would you like to add any additional comments?
Thank you, Brenda. Um, I've had also, uh, had the pleasure of working with Ashley for the last ten years. Uh, she has been a very, uh, creative member of our team, and I appreciate all the work that Ashley has done. Uh, one of her prime responsibilities is to work directly with, uh, our police department and, uh, make sure that we, uh, have, uh, good communication related to our, our police work and, um, and the programs that we have within the police department. So Ashley, I really appreciate... the programs that we have within the police department, so Ashley, I really appreciate your great service to the city.
Ashley, if you're on the line, would you like to share any comments? Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and my city team members, I am, cannot believe that it's been a decade being here at the city, it's been such an honor to serve this incredible community of Rancho Cordova, after having spent so much time growing up here as a child and now seeing how much our community has grown and flourished. I have enjoyed working with all of you and getting to know all of our residents and businesses. This past year in particular has been so difficult and our roles have shifted, but our community has continued to do what Rancho Cordova does, which is stand with each other, collaborate with each other, and I'm just excited, I'm excited by the next part of this chapter, and thank you for all the opportunities you have given me here at the city. Thanks, Ashley. Next up, I would like to recognize Junior Lee, Junior has been assisting the Rancho Cordova community as a code enforcement officer for the past fifteen years. During this time, Junior has become one of the city's subject matter experts regarding substandard housing, illegal cannabis cultivation, and most recently, a member of our homeless outreach team, so thank you, Junior, for all that you do for keeping our community safe. Cyrus, would you like to add any additional comments?
Likewise, Junior, I'd really thank you for your service to the community, Junior also comes with a wealth of knowledge and experience, serving our community, he has been here for a long time, almost since the beginning days of the cityhood, and has had a major hand in building our code enforcement and, and the programs that we have related to our code enforcement program, so I thank you, Junior, for your service.
Junior, are you on the line? I'm not sure if you were able to join.
Yeah, well, yeah, he's right there.
Oh, I can't see him, so.
Looks like he's in his car.
Hi, Junior.
Thank you very much, I'm very happy to work for the city and be given the opportunities I have, again, it's been a great time, it doesn't seem like fifteen years, seems like it's gone pretty quick, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. And last, I would like to recognize Loriann Olm, over the last fifteen years, Loriann has grown her career from a management technician to her current position leading the Community Engagement Division. Throughout the years, Loriann has assisted community members establish multiple neighborhood leadership groups and organized various volunteer programs and beautification projects like the Neighborhood Walks with the Mayor, Rebuilding Together Sacramento, and our St. Baldur's Events. Loriann has truly dedicated her career to serving our Rancho Cordova community, so thank you, Loriann, for all that you do, and Cyrus, would you like to add any additional comments?
The only thing I'd like to add, it's been really fun watching Loriann to grow into the role and the position that evolved into our community engagement program, Loriann started with our planning department, worked in our, with our planning, and ultimately moved into the community engagement, she had a, a big hand in creating our community engagement program and the format of it, the way we have it now, and, and the success that we've had with the program. We, as part of this, the program has also evolved in doing neighborhood beautification projects, other work in the community, and she has also been able to create and establish great relationships with members of our community, so thank you, Loriann, for what you have done, and congratulations on this significant milestone for you.
Loriann, would you like to add any additional comments?
Of course, you know, I love to share, thank you, Vice Mayor, Council, Cyrus, I know there's folks there at the room as well, I, I have to say, I, I share exactly what Ashley and Junior have said, I love that I live here and I work here, I love to see all the change that this city has done over the years, it's amazing, and I think the, the biggest thing is that I really believe in the shared vision of our leaders, I think that that makes a big difference of why you stay in a place as long as you do, I think that, I, I have amazing relationships with our employees and our residents, and I can't imagine being anywhere else, so, thank you.
We couldn't imagine you anywhere else either.
So with that, again, congratulations to Ashley on reaching her ten years of service milestone, and to both Junior and Loriann for reaching their fifteen years of service milestone, thank you.
Thanks, Brenda. Okay, with that, we'll move on to public comments.
What an amazing group.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, what an amazing group of employees, I can't believe any of you have been here that long, it's hard, it's hard to imagine, and how much we've accomplished together, and I only say that as the, that's the intro, right? Now it's what we have to accomplish next together, in your next ten or fifteen years with the city, we're really looking forward to that, but thank you for all your great work, it's really incredible.
Yeah, David, if you, if you kind of look back at like, you know how people do that and they're like, wow, that was a really good draft that year, right? And it's like, two thousand and eleven was pretty good for us, and so was two thousand and six, like we.
Whoever's doing the hiring.
Right. You look back, you go, oh, that's when, that's when they won the Super Bowl, with those three picks, right? And that year.
Well, whoever hired Ashley. Well, I was gonna say, whoever hired Ashley, I had a minor, she looks like twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want to go into too many details there.
Okay, thank you, Council, okay, so with that, we'll move on to public comment, so citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time, via teleconference or by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk, for those of you in the room, she's the lady on the left, if you want to make a public comment via teleconference, please use the raised hand feature at the bottom, the bottom of the screen, the bottom center of the screen, if you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand, for those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called upon at the point on the agenda when an item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from taking, from, is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. I'll ask the city clerk, do we have any public comments?
The city clerk's office received two public comments via email, the first is from Tiffany West and Jordan Schneider, the second is from Donald Childs, those were the two that we've received for general public comment via email, I have not received any public speaker cards for general public comment from those in the audience, and we do have a couple of hands raised in Zoom. The first person I'm gonna call on is Rick's MacBook, so Rick, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you and you will have three minutes.
And Rick, for the record, could you give us your, your name, I'm guessing it's not MacBook. Rick, can you hear us? No, you're still on mute.
... always growing in our art knowledge and sharing in the camaraderie of a shared vision to bring.
Are you talking, are you guys talking to me?
Yeah, Rick, we, we can hear you, there's some background, could you state your whole name?
I have another meeting going on. You know what, this was regarding the utility boxes, so that's why I, I was talking to you guys, so if you want.
You can make your comment, if you can get the background sound to turn off, that'd be great.
Hold on, yeah, get rid of, quiet this other meeting down, hold on.
First you get a member listing on RanchoCordovaarts.com, and you can link to your website if you happen to be in my gallery.
Sorry, anyway, I heard a lot of your comments about the utility box, I just wanted to applaud Daniel for the work that he did do, it's something that, that you, as you drive through the city, it's, 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 it's creating excitement, it's creating a, a feed of enlightenment, with people seeing these different images, it's creating the whole spectrum of what, you know, Linda said, it's subjective, and some things will go over your head and some things will, you don't understand, but that's what art's all about, and I'd be happy to give a private art history seminar to the city council if they wanted it, just to open their eyes to see what the different types of various art is out there, it's if you walk through the Crocker Museum, you're very much seeing what we're seeing on our streets, a very diverse styles and imagery that evokes imagination, and that's what it's all about, that, that's what, and I appreciate all your comments, because that, that definitely is a statement of, of the true meaning of art, to create these kind of dialogues with people, and I, I applaud the city for doing this.
Thanks, Rick, and thanks for participating.
Bet.
And I think for the record, that was Rick Slum.
That was Rick Slum, but also, I mean, for some reason, I thought the city council was on the, the jury, picking these, I just found out.
No, no, we, we, we were very careful not to ever do that.
Thank you, guys.
And Stacy, I know, I just wanted to clarify that, I believe the Jordan Snyder Tiffany West email, Tiffany West is the neighborhood that he came, that he lives in.
Thank you, for the clarification.
Sure, any other public comment?
Yes, we have one by telephone, area code nine one six eight zero four, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak as well.
And please state your name before you start.
Yeah, this is Vice Mayor Ann Lincoln Village, I have a comment for, hi, for a consent calendar item, and I'm not sure when I'm supposed to speak for one of those.
Uh, hang on to that, yeah, when we get to the calendar, we can pull that item and you can make your comment.
Okay, it's nine point three, thank you.
Great, thank you, okay, noted, next public comment?
That's all the public comment that we have at this time?
Okay, great, so with that, we will move into, hang on, we'll move into council reports, and we will start with Siri.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor, this week, well, first off, I want to say school has started, kids are back to school after almost, what, not almost, after more than a year, most kids, and so I think we should, I want to make sure that everyone aware, is aware that in the morning, it is rush hour, but please go slow in the school zones, there're kids walking to school, and just be careful this week. What else, I attended the Old Grove Unified School District meeting, we talked about, you know, the general topics, to see when the high school's coming, about kids having masks on in school, you know, all the safety precautions that they're taking in school, again, going back to make sure, this is a public service announcement, please make sure that you're vaccinated for the safety of you and your loved ones and our kids, please, please do so if you've not been vaccinated yet. I attended the Sacramento Transport Authority meeting last week, one of the topics that they were going to discuss was the Sacramento Abandoned Vehicle Service Authority Fee Program, this was S A B S A, basically what this one is, is they are trying to get fees for abandoned vehicle services, and this fee qualifies as a tax, so therefore they were looking at an extension for this, which would actually sunset in April of next year. This extension would require a public vote, but that, that topic has been pushed out to next week, so I will give you an update on that the next time this comes around. I attended India's seventy-fifth Independence Day Celebration, which happened in the Capitol Building downtown Sacramento, it was a wonderful celebration, there were cultural programs, and it was a proud moment for me to represent both India and America at the same time, but, you know, it got me thinking, which all of us are, you know, freedom is something that we all enjoy, but with freedom comes responsibility, and we all should be responsible, I mean, we're seeing what's happening out there in Afghanistan, and we have to not take our freedom lightly, we have to be responsible citizens, and we have to be upstanding citizens at that. I guess that's, that's all I have for today.
Thanks, Siri, Linda.
Okay, so, this being August, there were a couple of meetings that have been canceled, but I did attend National Light Out with everybody else, and enjoyed seeing the people who were willing to come out and hang around with their neighbors, and we've been enjoying the concerts at Village Green, we were able to walk over, take the dog, take, take food or buy food there, it's lots of fun, the group this Friday night was particularly, this last Friday night was particularly good. Tonight, along with Garrett, I went to the opening of this thing they're calling, of the Burning Man Festival, and there's, Rick would shoot me if I didn't say there, that this is a very, um, subjective kind of an art display, everybody will have their own reaction to it, it's very interesting, it's supposed to be evocative of a variety of different things, and so it'll be interesting to see what the art display at the, that one was at Mather Field Station, so it'll be interesting to see what the, what the one at the Sunrise Station is all about, and they'll be up all week and have a closing event sometime on Saturday evening. Siri, thank you for bringing up the seventy-fifth anniversary of India's freedom, we, of course, have enjoyed not only so many people from all parts of India, but having so many people from Telangana who live here in Rancho Cordova, and the history of India is long and very storied, and you're absolutely right, we need to, we probably need to recognize what's happening in Afghanistan, and, um, one of the groups we should adjourn in memory of tonight is the two hundred and, two thousand four hundred and forty-eight US troops who have lost their lives in the last twenty years trying to prevent exactly this thing from happening. But the person we really want to honor tonight is a wonderful gentleman named George Hudson, he was one of our Tuskegee Airmen, he joined the Army Air Corps in nineteen forty-five when he was fifteen years old, his mother gave him permission to do that, and he held a variety of positions within what became ultimately the Air Force, and was ultimately stationed here in Rancho Cordova at Mather, and has lived in the same house for fifty years. So he has passed away and tomorrow morning at eleven o'clock at the Camellia Cemetery on Jackson Highway, there will be a homegoing service for him, and I will be there taking a resolution from the city, a commemorative resolution from the city, and to support his family. One of his daughters, Debbie Hudson Cannon, actually represented Rancho Cordova on a Citizens Advisory Committee that one of the county sheriffs had for a period of time, and because Debbie was interested because she works for, or has worked for, the Department of Justice, and she did a really good job of representing Rancho Cordova on that advisory committee, so we want to adjourn tonight in memory of her dear father, George Hudson. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda, and I think I went out of order, David, you're next up.
Ah, no problem, so it's been the first week of school for the Folsom Cordova School District here in Rancho Cordova, and I've heard from a few parents and a principal about some traffic woes, I can, I can generally assure people, things will be better in the second week, as parents and students figure out how to do this efficiently, but in the meantime, I'm happy to see city staff helping with some signal adjustments and things like that that might be necessary at some school drop-off and, and pickup times. Also, on the school front, I'm aware that a lot of, you know, of course, here in Rancho on the school front, I'm aware that a lot of, you know, of course, here in Rancho Cordova, we have been welcoming refugees from other countries for decades. It's largely because we have the apartment stock that matches sort of the refugee agency's ability to place refugees. And so they end up here in Rancho Cordova, and their kids end up in our schools. And as a result, we have quite a large number of Afghani students currently at Cordova High School. And so I was made aware just in the past couple of days that there's a lot of distress among those students about what's happening to their extended families and their relatives in Afghanistan. And as if that was not enough, we lost a recent graduate of Cordova High School last week, Tim Apple, who many of you may know, passed away in a very unfortunate way. There are remembrance services. I think one has already occurred. That was a family event. There's likely to be another public event that you'll hear about. But in any case, it's been sort of a double hit to the staff and students at Cordova High School. And so I offered, and I know Cyrus did as well, offered city support for their activities. But they are, they're continuing on, of course, as they must. They have a great staff there that's resilient and student body that I know will overcome the challenges. But it's also, particularly on the Afghanistan side, sort of a heads up that there may be more stuff coming for those students, and there may be more stuff coming for Rancho Cordova. Linda, you probably remember a few years ago, and Donald, this may have happened when you were on council, when we got the first full wave of Afghani refugees, it was, let's see, Cordova Meadows, I think, that suddenly had about, I can't remember if the number was 150 or 190, students who spoke absolutely no English show up in the fall with no pre-warning to the school district. And the school district had not a single translator available to speak with those students. So it was a pretty horrible situation for our school district. And this is sort of a heads up that, at least our principal at Cordova High has been warned that this is likely to happen again. We're likely to get another large group of Afghani refugees and students, and that's something we need to prepare for. Probably this time, if we have some kind of warning as a community, instead of just trying to deal with an emergency situation at the last minute. So.
Yeah, with the Afghans and the Syrians who sort of showed up at the same time.
Yeah, that was a challenging situation. I did see one reference today that the Sacramento area might be host to as many as 2,000 Afghani refugees. I saw another reference of 1,000 families, so I don't know where the reality is in that. But it's probably a numerical difference between those two. I've been busy on infrastructure issues with the National League of Cities as chair of their Transportation Infrastructure Services Committee. We had a briefing with the White House, I think it was last Wednesday. We had a sort of a virtual rally on Tuesday, you may have seen or participated in. Obviously, the Senate has passed a big infrastructure bill that has most of the things we wanted in it. One particular thing of enormous import to Rancho Cordova is an amendment that was proposed by Senator Cornyn that would have loosened up all of the, let's just call it the COVID money, that previously came and allow up to 10 million of it for a city of our size to be spent on infrastructure issues. We received, I think, 15.7 million, some number about like, some number in that neighborhood that was supposed to be in COVID relief. 10 million, making 10 million of that available for infrastructure would be a very big deal for us. Unfortunately, although the White House agreed to that amendment, it was not included in the final package. We now think it may be included after the House passes it, or it may be included in subsequent legislation. But that's something we're working on very hard, not just for Rancho Cordova, but for literally thousands of other cities that are in a similar situation with regard to those ARPA dollars. So stay tuned on that. Finally, I was not able to attend our last meeting, and I think you all know why. I was attending the Junior Olympics with two athletes from here in Rancho Cordova who qualified for the Junior Olympics in Florida. One is my son, Charles, who did spectacularly, and the other is Gian Gonzalez, my mentee, basically. They are both students in high school currently, and they were able to compete in javelin and hammer, as well as discus and shot put, so all throwing events. Charles qualified in three of those events, Gian qualified in two of those events. And they had a magnificent experience. And now, having been there and seen the enormous challenges of sort of organizing one of these giant meets, I mean, this meet had about 5,000 kids at it over a week, about 2,500 high school kids, if you can imagine, from around the country, 2,000 high school kids from around the country. Next year, that Junior Olympics is being held in Sacramento, at Sacramento State. And we are the host, basically, district of the USA Track and Field Committee. And as a result, we're going to get more slots available to us to put kids into those Junior Olympics where they can earn their way into the competition, basically, than other regions around the country. So this presents us with a really unique opportunity to get some Rancho Cordova kids into that event, those events that they may not otherwise be able to afford to participate in or qualify for. So it's going to be a very exciting sort of year, making sure the Rancho Cordova Track Club and Cordova High School and our middle school track programs are all up to speed to get as many kids as possible into those competitions. So that is my report.
Thanks, David. And congratulations to Charles and the coaches. So just to first speak on the Afghan refugees, I don't know if I remembered it being that many students, David, but I know it was really disruptive. But I know one of the strategies that they ended up doing was through working with Loriann, we ended up with folks that ended up in the community engagement program that ended up becoming interpreters and parent advocates for the school, that were actually residents and refugees that had come over. So some of our most engaged residents in that program are Afghani refugees that moved here. But I would encourage staff, and even, you know, this is probably something we put on our two by two, is to reach out. The two that I know in town that do most of this work are International Rescue Committee and Opening Doors, Inc. And so we should be talking to them now. The only thing that I think anybody knows right now, besides what we've seen, the horrific stuff on TV tonight and yesterday morning, is that about 30,000 refugees are going to be moved to two military bases, one in, I want to say Texas, another one in Wisconsin, if I remember. And from there, they're going to start processing visas and whatever else. So that's the last, that's the last number I've heard. And I don't think we have a timeline as far as how that's going to happen. But you'd assume we're not keeping them on a military base for very long, and the goal is to get them to communities. This is one of the places that, here in Minneapolis, are really some of the largest areas where they're relocating individuals for this. But again, I would encourage staff, International Rescue Committee and Opening Doors are the two larger local nonprofits that are doing that. I was scheduled to go to National Night Out, and I unfortunately got stuck working. And by the time I was done working, it was almost over. So thanks to staff and everybody else that got out and saw people and for those folks that hosted, thank you. I did attend the Sacramento Children's Museum tent birthday party that was held on Saturday. It was all supposed to be outside to be careful with COVID and everything else. But then, of course, we had smoke, and so they ended up moving the reception ahead of time inside, and they moved all the tables and stuff. But it was a great event. They had jugglers and handouts and popcorn and all kinds of stuff. And it was, it was nice. It was really the first time I had ever experienced the museum, one with my children, since the pandemic. My youngest had gone to camp, as a lot of you know. But it was, it was interesting because this was the first time that really both sides, the new side, was utilized for the public. And so they were really getting a lot of the stuff that they usually keep in storage areas and other things and in vans and put it all out at the museum. So it was actually really fun to see that. And there was an unveiling of the Smud light wall. None of you have seen it. There's a, there's an interactive light wall that you think you'd have to touch to get to interact with it, but you actually only have to get kind of close to it. So it's really COVID friendly. You don't actually have to touch it for the lights to change. The kind of sad thing about that was that was installed about 19 months ago, and there was a plan in about April of 2020 to unveil it to the public, and obviously, that never happened. And so if you go over there, the newest exhibit that's almost two years old now has been rededicated, and Smud was the sponsor of that. Siri mentioned about the Old Grove Unified, two by two. I will say, you know, they were, they were the first school district around here really to go full-time in-person learning. Some of the things that we heard is, they started with 19 schools in year round, which included the two schools in Rancho Cordova, Sunrise and Magari. They were seeing about eight to 10 COVID positive tests or reports of positive tests or exposures a day during the first, I want to say we met with them, and they had been open 11 school days by then. So they were, they were still seeing some activity, and that was before the 40 other schools went back to school last week. But I can tell you, as a parent in the district, it also got, you know, a notification that one of our, that a child in one of our children's classrooms had been exposed. Not that that meant quarantining in any way, but, you know, they're not only getting to the, you've been exposed, you've positive tested, but somebody's been exposed in some way. So I think they were still getting the kinks out and everything like that, and spacing of desks and some other things. But for the most part, it's been fairly seamless. We did have some conversations. I believe this is public knowledge, I'm not sharing anything I'm not supposed to. But the school district has engaged, and I believe either the RFPs have, or they've actually hired the architect to start designing the high school, middle school in the south area of the Unified, which I think is really exciting. And one of the things that they've done really is, you know, I think in large part because of the work that the city's been doing with them too, is they are engaging an architect to do a phased-in approach of building the high school, middle school. And so the expectation is, so that they can build sooner rather than later, is that they are planning to build a 712 middle school, high school, one facility, and it's actually going to be what ultimately will become the middle school site. And they're going to forego building the larger high school site until there's enough students and families to fill it. But they're actually going to build a school, probably a school of choice. It would be a 712 campus that would house, I don't know, 500 to 600 students to start with. Because with them, I believe their average high schools are 2,500 or so. And so the number of students we need for that would take a lot longer to obviously fill. But we already know that students that are moving into the neighborhood now run the risk of being offloaded even from the neighborhood middle school because there's not enough room right now. So that is interesting. That probably is going to save us, I don't know, I'm guessing five years, longer than, or less time that we would have to wait to get the school than if we had just waited for them to have enough students to fill that middle school, high school. Because we do know we are losing families when all of their children are either in middle school or high school, that that commute sometimes is too much for some of them, and they had to move closer to Pleasant Grove, or they move out of the city or out of the district completely. Yeah, Siri, thanks for covering STA. I know that was a bit of a mess where I couldn't go, and I thought I could go, then at the last minute, I couldn't go again. But yeah, the, I did mention, I want to say, following the last meeting, that this parking enforcement and towing authority fee that they've been collecting, it used to be considered a fee, now it's considered a tax, which means it likely will have to go on the ballot. And even if we get it on to the ballot for next June, which I believe would be the soon as we could get it, it's still going to lapse between them. And that's assuming that we can get it passed. It would lapse, and we wouldn't be collecting it for probably a good nine months at best if we get it passed. And we are by far one of the highest users of that fee. So we are, I want to say, by far the most active submitters of reimbursements for towing cars and, you know, vehicles and trailers and other stuff. I also want to say, we can use it to also maybe pay for cleaning up, lighted, like, lots of things like that. And then finally, and I don't have a whole lot to report on this, because if you read the Bee and kept up with the city of Sacramento, you probably know most of what I heard today. But I did attend the ULI's homeless innovative thinkers meeting today, which was mainly a presentation on the city of Sacramento's approach to homeless and housing that they passed last week, I want to say. But it was presented by Mayor Steinberg and John Hodgkins and Steve Waters, and he's at a different organization now. I didn't recognize the name, but it looks like they're now the major service provider for a lot of the shelter services in the north of the rail yards area. So where VOA and some of the other ones are having them. And so they were kind of explaining a lot of the ways that they went about it. What was interesting was right near the end, I think, some folks started asking about, well, when are you going to, you know, allow for community input? And I believe that they had had three or four community town halls in every, in every council district leading up to that meeting. And then people were asking about community input. And I think one of them was saying, well, this has now been adopted, and there's no discretion about where they're going to put these and what they're going to do with them, that their plan had been set. So it's interesting, even with all of the work that they had done, that that's still the kinds of questions that I've ever seen. But yeah, and I believe that is, it was recorded, and for us ULI members, I believe you can still get your hands on it. But it was an interesting way to spend my lunchtime today. With that.
So Donald, was that the one where originally they were going to talk about different housing options, small houses and that kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah. So.
And several architects were going to present?
Yeah, um, yes, that was part of it. I mean.
We had staff, we had staff attend.
Yeah, I believe Stefan was on as well.
Stefan, Stefan was on the call.
Yeah, as part of, as part of their plan, they have a mixed, mixed services and mixed units as far as what they're building, what they're citing. Obviously, getting away from tents, but into tiny homes, high-efficiency homes.
Yeah.
Yeah, manufactured, off-site-built homes that are then placed, a lot of different things.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one. Yep. So with that, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. I would try to be brief on my report. I wanted to give the community and the council an update on two public works projects that are significant projects in the community, and the contracts have been awarded. One is White Rock Road. This is east of Lujan to serve the new community of Rio del Oro. This section of the road will be closed starting today. The closure of the road started today, and it will last for several months. We hope and expect that the road will be open sometimes in the spring of 2022, once the construction work is completed and to facilitate the development of Rio del Oro. The other project is a neighborhood paving project in Cordova Vineyards. We had hoped and expected that this, that the contractor would be able to do the paving this fall. But you probably have heard in the news, and there is a serious shortage of materials. Right now, the biggest shortage seems to be piping, and our pipes, pipes are needed for this project with some of the drainage improvements. So unfortunately, because of that, the contractor is not able to finish the paving of some of the roadways that we had expected this fall and would have to be postponed until the rainy season into the, into the spring of 2022. So Albert Stricker, our Public Works Director, has been in communication with our residents. He has let them know about the situation and the reason for the delays. And hopefully, our community understands that this is not the fault of the contractor of the city. This is simply just an issue with the shortage of materials that we're facing, not only in our region, but nationwide. The other thing I wanted to give you an update, we had, we worked with Sacramento County and KP Market to hold a vaccination clinic last Saturday. We also had another vaccination clinic for COVID last Wednesday at Me Rancho. Unfortunately, that clinic had to be cut short because of the heat. We couldn't finish it. But one of the things that we've tried to do is to go out to the community as much as we could. We are very pleased that we in the city have the highest vaccination rate in the county. And one of the reasons is obviously and definitely the fact that we've been very proactive in working. in working with various partners and offering the clinics to different members of our community. And the other item I wanted to give the council as an an update is uh that I had a conversation with Dr. Stockwa of the Veterans Hospital and talked about, had a good discussion about the uh the water tower. Unfortunately, uh, he did not know that this was not communicated with the city. Apparently, they've had a change of staffing, their planning director had left, and they had a brand new planning director. And that somehow some miscommunication happened. Obviously, they don't need a city permit. It's a federal facility and they can construct those kind of improvements. But we had hoped that they will communicate to the city so we can give, uh, have some input in uh some of uh the features of the project, the details of the project. Unfortunately, we did not have a chance, an opportunity to comment on that. Uh, but I received their word and commitment that they will uh let us know on any other future projects. And so we have put their planning department in touch with our planning department and hopefully they they'll be able to communicate future projects better. Uh, lastly, I wanted to mention the National Night Out. It was great turnout. We had really a good, a good uh meetings and good discussions, the ability to break bread with many of residents, residents. And we also have something on tape that hopefully someday we can play. Or at one of these community meetings, uh, the mayor, Mr. Gatewood, uh, did perform and he participated in karaoke that that we were able to record and we can play that for for you at some point. It was great fun and it was great turnout and and I appreciate all the staff support. We had many members of our PD, Police Department, Code Enforcement, our community engagement and communication team that were out and about in full force. And that's all I have, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Well, Cyrus, that shouldn't be a hopefully. Uh, we get that video, that should be like a mandatory thing. And all over our social media from the city.
It was fun.
What did he sing?
I forget, but it was a fun, it was a.
Oh, great.
It was, we have it on tape.
Well, I want to thank you guys for representing me when I was uh out of town. Uh, and Donald, I'm sorry I missed the the Children's Museum um tenth anniversary. It's hard to believe, honestly, it's been that long. I can remember sitting in a meeting, gosh, I don't know, probably fourteen years ago and like landing it right in Rancho Cordova and finally, after a couple of years of effort, figuring out how we were going to get it here. That was a big deal. But unfortunately, on Saturday, I had a cold. Uh, it was not COVID, but I had a cold and I just thought, you know what? I don't think I need to go in this environment and take a risk spreading that around.
That was a wise choice.
Yes, yes. But uh, I I'm glad that was a good event. I'm glad they they stayed safe indoors and in healthier air. But uh, yeah, kudos to the Children's Museum. I'm so sorry I missed that.
Yeah, it was a nice event. I will also say, and I know Linda brought it up last time, but uh, the butterfly event is on September twelfth. You can buy your butterflies now. I know I use some of my discretionary account and I believe just by trading emails with the with the museum, they're able to reserve our butterflies. Um, so this is um in partnership with, I believe, Snowline Hospice.
Yeah.
Um, and it is, um, it's also um commemorating Grandparents' Day. Um, and so they did it two years ago. I actually really enjoyed attending it shortly, well, not shortly, it was about six months after my my mother's passing. Um, and so it 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 was great for the kids and everybody else that came there. And they they read in a really nice poem and then you get to release these butterflies that are in these teeny little cardboard boxes. Um, but it's a great event and if you have time, please buy a butterfly and uh come because they're actually going to do it in person this year, which last year you picked it, last year you picked them up, went home and let it go in in all of the smoke that day anyway. So not only was it COVID, it was also a really bad smoke day that day. Um, so hopefully better weather. But September twelfth is that and you can go on their website and buy butterflies now. Uh, okay, so with that, we'll move on to consent uh calendar items.
Donald, I, yeah, I also wanted to acknowledge, um, I couldn't attend, but I wanted to acknowledge the Chamber of Commerce for their elected officials reception for those who went. Um, anyone?
I think only Garrett and I were there, I believe. I might, Linda, David, you might have been there, I didn't see it, okay.
Well, acknowledging they went, I'm sure it was good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so with that, we'll move on to item nine, which is our consent uh calendar items. Um, okay, so first, Stacy, I believe you have something we need to clarify.
Yes, so um how items nine point three and nine point four are ordered on the agenda compared to uh the agenda packet have been switched. Um, so for clarification, I just want to state that item nine point three is the approval of the annexation boundary map for the Sunrise Palm Project and annexation to the City of Rancho Cordova Community Facilities District number two zero zero eight dash one, street lighting and road maintenance. And item nine point four is the resolution authorizing the city council of the City of Rancho Cordova to modify the Measure H Community Enhancement Fund Citizen Oversight Board to broaden their duties to include a review of how tax revenues from both Measure H and Measure R are spent by the city and provide feedback. So that would be helpful to anyone who wants to make a public comment um or a council member who wants to pull items nine point three or nine point four. Otherwise, they were agendized and published correctly. Sorry for the mix up.
Okay.
And and nine, nine point seven. Question.
Linda, you cut out. What what are you wanting to do with nine point seven?
I'm pretty sure nine point seven was the one that FISA had a question about.
I thought it was nine point three.
Okay, well, let's hang on to that first. Are there any council members that need to pull an item?
I I don't need to pull an item, I just need clarification on what Stacy said because I still see nine point three as the Measure H Community Enhancement Fund and nine point four as the Sunrise Palm Project.
Yeah, that's what's on our website. I'm holding what I'm guessing is in the back of the room, which has those switch.
So the um, the printed agenda off of our website prints it out in the correct order.
Yeah, the on the website, the it, I guess it's wrong. But so no items to be pulled, sounds like from council. Uh, Stacy, what, where do we have public comment?
Uh, I have no public comment in the room. I've received no public comment via email for the consent calendar, but we do have a um caller, FISA. I'm going to let you go ahead and speak and I will unmute you for the three minutes.
Wait, wait, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Okay.
All we need to know first, hang on, all we need to know first, FISA, what item do you want to speak on?
Um, so originally, when I saw it published, it was nine point three, but based on Stacy's correction, that would now be nine point four.
Okay, so the measure, the Measure H, Measure R item, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, hang on for one sec. Um, okay, so we'll go ahead. Can I entertain a motion to approve everything but nine point four?
So I will move that we approve um nine point one, two, three, and then five through eight.
Okay, do I have, uh, okay, I have a second. I have a motion and a second, a motion by Budge, a second by Pulapati. Uh, can I have a roll call on that motion, please?
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood is absent. Vice Mayor Terry.
Hi, okay. Okay, those items are agreed to? Okay, uh, FISA, for, go ahead and make your public comment for nine point four.
Don't you want, don't you want Stacy to read it into the record?
Um.
Well, she sort of already did.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's a consent item. We we pulled it, we'll we'll take our action after this, but go ahead, FISA. You have three minutes, please.
Cool, um, so this is FISA mobile in Lincoln Village. Um, I want to say that I don't really think there's any teeth in the terms of the resolution, uh, giving the Measure H and our citizen oversight committee uh committee more oversight-ish duties, which basically involves reviewing the books to make sure line items add up. That doesn't really equal giving them any sort of advisory or front-end decision-making abilities. Back in September twenty twenty, the SACDEM panelists reviewed uh the proposed Measure R initiative and they concluded, uh, quote, "While oversight after the fact is good, we believe that there needs to be an established process in place for proactively getting public input before the council decides how to spend the funds. That can certainly take the form of a community advisory committee, but it can also take other forms, such as participatory budgeting. It cannot and should not just take the form of public comment at a council meeting. The input needs to be proactively solicited and incorporated into the initial budget proposal." Um, well, I don't really care what side of the aisle you sit on, but I happen to agree with these particular SACDEM comments. I'd like to see space carved out for front-end resident advisory in the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do you have a motion?
I will move item nine point four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion by Budge, a second by Sander. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Hi.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Mayor Gatewood is absent. Vice Mayor Terry.
Hi, thank you. Item carries. Okay, moving on to consent public hearing items. Let's see here. Consent public hearing items consists, all right, I'm I'm rusty at this, folks, it's a bit not foreign. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Should have said that on the last one, too. Sorry about that. I didn't highlight that. Um, okay, looks like we only have one item for ten point one. Um, I guess, let me open the public hearing. Uh, do we have any comments on this?
The city clerk does not see any public comments in the room. I've received nothing via email and there's no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, and I'm not going to go grab the gavel off the wall that I have over there, so hopefully you guys can hear me hit the the table. Uh, any comments by the council? Okay, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Uh, do I have a motion for this item?
Move approval of ten point one.
I have a motion. I have a motion by Budge, a second by Pulapati, roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood is absent. Vice Mayor Terry.
Hi, okay, item carries. Moving on to the, to public hearing items, eleven point one, Ecosite Two Cellular Telecommunications Tower at the southeast corner of Zinfandel and Folsom Boulevard, conditional use permit, project BD one zero zero one eight. And who's taking this? June, Mary R. Good evening.
Yes, good evening. June Cowes with the Planning Department. And so we'll wait for it to be, come up. Okay, so the Ecosite Cellular Telecommunication Tower. This was actually continued from the last meeting on August the second. Uh, just go over the project requests. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for the development of a fifty-foot-high uh telecommunications tower and includes the um enclosure, one thousand one hundred and thirty square feet, and it has ground equipment and the antennas. Site location is off of Folsom Boulevard and Zinfandel Drive between the grocery outlet and Target store. And so at the August second um city council meeting, there were comments, revise blue color to a dark color, utilize the city seal skyline and top border and replace the silhouettes around the enclosure wall with a river or parkway theme. And so the revised cell tower design, the applicant came back, uh, the color's darker blue. Um, they utilize the city seal. You can see the Mack building and the oak tree on the top border and then replaced sort of a river theme along where the silhouettes were at. And so looking at the photo simulations from Zinfandel Drive. And this is a closer look from Zinfandel Drive behind the grocery outlet and from Folsom Boulevard. And that's just a closer look from Folsom Boulevard. So you can see the Mack building and the oak trees with a couple of the hills behind it. And this is what it would look like. And this was just showing what the last version was, which was on August second. And of course, the clock tower design back in June. And staffer recommends city council find the project um is compliant with CEQA. And if the council requests additional design revisions, a condition can be added that reflects the revisions and the applicant will work with staff to finalize the design and adopt their resolution approving uh the project um conditional use permit subject to the findings, project plans, and conditions of approval. And if you had any questions, I believe the applicant uh from Ecosite is on the line.
On the line or in the room?
Uh, this is Joe Poppin appearing by Zoom on behalf of the applicant, uh, Vertical Bridge.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Um, okay, um, let's start. Stacy, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay, uh, council, questions for staff or the applicant?
Um, I don't have any questions, but I have comments.
Go ahead.
Okay, so um, so this made me smile. Um, I actually, or made me laugh. I actually, um, as much as I'm a fan of civic clock towers, um, that the the last, that original version just um did not fit uh the image of what an appropriate civic clock tower should look like. Um, this one is much more, uh, much more, it's becoming an icon similar to the tower at um at the Village Green. And uh, its physical appearance, the materials, the um, the uh substantial color, the um, taking the image from a portion of the city seal to wrap around the top. Those kinds of things are wildly successful from my perspective. And I did run this by uh some of our um uh representatives of our artist group and they came back with very substantial comments that uh supported the design and the and the materials. The one thing that that some of us think is boring um still is the um um, the little river ribbon around the bottom. And so somebody asked the question of whether or not that could be reserved to be a mural project. We could have um at least four murals on that CMU wall that might um, just like our murals on Folsom Boulevard, really might represent Rancho Cordova much better than um the repetitious uh uh river ribbons. And so I wanted to run that by everybody and and see what you all thought.
Uh, do we want to see if the applicant has a response to that request?
Uh, I'm happy to respond. Once again, Joe Poppin, um, I'm from the Brian Cave Law Firm on behalf of the applicant. Um, you know, I I we've appeared a number of times. Uh, I think that uh the idea of putting a condition in the resolution that the applicant will work with uh staff uh to make any further design changes would be great. Um, I I don't think my client would have an an objection to, uh, I'm not sure exactly how many murals or what the cost or what that would be, but um, I mean, it's really up to the city as to what it is, uh, the the base of this, uh, you know, what it, what it shows, uh, either pictorially or through like an image flow that we have. you know, what it, what it shows, uh, either pictorially or through like an image flow that we have here. So we don't have a real, you know, uh, you know, we're not really concerned about the image except for we want it to work for the city.
So in my perspective, Donald, um, uh, we would simply ask the applicant to reserve the CMU wall at this point for, um, for a future, future mural project. And they wouldn't necessarily need to do anything about it. Um, we should, we would probably suggest that the applicant should review our existing murals on the Boulevard to see that the way in which they are preserved has, um, enabled them to survive time and, and last very well. They, they continue to be just as vibrant and attractive as they were when they were first put up several years ago. So that should not be a concern for the, for the applicant or, or, or their client.
Yeah, and these will be commissioned work by the, by the city. And when you talk about cost, these are things that are formed by the city. But it sounds like you could work with staff and, and I probably accomplish that. Um, I think it would, one of the important things would be what kind of materials you use to build that wall that, that you could then put things on. Uh, but I think our public works and planning staff can work with you on that. Um, any other questions for staff or the applicant?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, of approving with, uh, you know, design details to be worked out later. But I do have one, and I really appreciate you guys sort of carrying this over and the applicant wanted to carry it over until I was back. Um, you know, frankly, I think the original clock tower in my mind is more attractive than this. I would, uh, though, go with Linda's suggestion that we're, you're approaching something iconic here, so that's probably good. The one, the one problem I have with this design is, well, I don't know how many people are going to get this. Linda should certainly get it at least. This is kind of in Bulldog Blue. We can't do that. Cannot, cannot, cannot do Bulldog Blue.
Okay, David, you know how it got to be, it got to be that.
We're red. We're red. We're Cordova Lancer red.
Yeah.
We can't do big blue. We would never, ever hear the end of that.
Um.
If we put a blue monument in the heart of Rancho.
It's also, it's also the colors of Rosemont, don't forget.
Ah, blue is?
Okay, but.
Blue and white, yeah.
But we're not in Rosemont.
We're not in Rosemont. So, Dave, the way it got to be this blue was the fact that the blue that they had shown before was a really kind of a wimpy, sort of an aqua.
Yeah, I, I listened to the meeting.
And, and that wasn't, that really was not going to work. It just, um, it was, it was the kind of color that not only probably wouldn't stand the test of time, but, uh, from a marketing standpoint, would not have legs the way a more substantial color would have. So, um.
Red and black, red and black, that's what our solution ever been like this.
Uh, I mean, if we're trying to match, you know, Target's red and it's right there in the shot. Um, so I.
Oh, that's an interesting point, too. I hadn't thought of that.
Yeah, so, uh, Siri, David, I'm sorry, was that all you had?
You know, Donald, on your point, the roof to the right, I don't know, it's just, I think the red might actually match the surrounding.
Yeah.
Yeah, that roof, uh, that Manfred roof over there used to be red. It, when they painted that building, it got painted tan, hope, whatever that is supposed to be.
I, I would say, you know, we, we've debated this long enough. I hate doing these art and design discussions. But I would say, let's just deal with the design details later. It'll, it'll be some form like this. Um, but yeah, my comment would be not, not so much blue. It's gotta be, gotta be red dominant if anything.
Okay.
But approve it for these four votes, four votes.
Siri, any comments or questions?
Oh, I think you got it covered.
Okay. Um, I just have one, one quick question, only because, like, as soon as I saw this design tonight, it reminded me of the Univision Tower in Fresno, if anyone's ever seen this, where they wrapped, what I'm guessing are TV antenna towers, um, with, with fabric. That over time in the Fresno heat and, and wind and everything get tattered and messed up. So what is this thing made of that's wrapped around it?
It's metal.
Is, is that accurate? I don't know if I saw it in.
Hello, this is Aaron Garcia. I'm with, uh, Vertical Bridge, the, uh, the applicant. And, uh, so just to give you a background, uh, we've done numerous, uh, I guess we'll call these, uh, decorative structures around the country. So there's, there's two or three different providers that we source them from. So the top, uh, arrays where the antennas are at, obviously are towards the top of the tower in ten foot sections. Those sections are actually, uh, FRP panels, fiberglass panels. So that the, the cell antennas can propagate through them. But behind the antennas, it's a steel structure that supports, uh, the, the structural element of this tower. So everything in front of it is, is FRP panels that are actually custom made to look the way that we, that we, that we want it to look. So they're basing the design, whatever colors we end up choosing at the end. And the letters that are, as you can see, the Rancho Cordova letters are actually going to be raised. So there'll be like a three D effect. And, uh, and then the panel at the very top that has, uh, your, your city seal, uh, those are actually, uh, three M, uh, kind of like a laminate that goes on that fiberglass panel. Uh, those, uh, I mean, we built these, uh, I mean, I've been building cell towers for more than twenty years and I've done quite a few of these. Uh, I have not yet to go back and replace one of those three M, uh, laminates that they use. And then the bottom portion where the, we don't use the FRP panels, those are, uh, those are basically the same custom panels. Uh, they just have, uh, instead of being fiberglass, uh, they use steel reinforcement towards the bottom where, where there's no cell phone, uh, antennas.
Okay, great. That, that addressed my concerns completely. Um, the only other question I had is, I, I don't think we've ever seen like a picture of what this would look at. Is this going to be lit? Is it going to be uplift from the bottom like a tree or like other buildings we've seen in other places? Or is there going to be backlit to this that's going to lead through? I guess you're saying that this is fiberglass, so it's not going to, light can't come through it. So like, I'd be, I guess I'd be interested at some point to figure out what does it look like at night? Because every picture we have is, you know, a nice sunny day with some clouds in it.
Yeah.
But like, am I, are we able to see this from space or are we able to see this, you know, only if we're in a parking lot at night?
Uh, I, I do not think the current design, uh, has any lighting, um, associated with it. But, uh, Aaron Garcia, if you, if you can comment on the, the possibility of, of lighting if the council so desires.
So we typically on these, uh, on these towers, uh, we, we don't light them from the inside because it's, it's basically impossible to do that.
Yeah.
Uh, so it would have to be outdoor lighting kind of shining up towards it on, on, on the foreside. But we, we shy away from that just because at, at night, it just, I mean, me personally, like I said, I've done a few in churches, uh, in, in commercial areas. Uh, most of the owners don't want us to light them just because they, they, they just kind of attract a lot of, a lot of bugs and it just, over time, you got to replace the light bulbs and it's a lot of maintenance. Uh, and it just, we, we stopped doing that a long, long time ago.
Yeah, Donald, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with, uh, with, uh, Mr. Garcia. Um, I have a sneaky feeling that if you light it, it sort of becomes a beacon and a target for criticism and as well as bugs.
Fair enough. I just wondered. I know just all of the pictures we've had have been looking like this. Um, okay, that's all my questions. Um, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I think if it was lit, it would be iconic. If it was, but shining lights at it, that's probably not going to do it. It would need to be architecturally lit from behind the letters.
That's why I was wondering what it was made of.
Behind the top, you know, something, something like that. But it could be, it could be pretty spectacular at night if it was lit. That's a very interesting suggestion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just glad it's not made with mesh or fabric, which I swear there's this one in Fresno that if anybody ever wants to go look at, that like, they may have changed by now, but like, they'd have to replace that stuff every two years and in between there it would get bad. So, okay.
Well, I will move approval of the, um, EcoSite two cellular telecommunications tower in this location, um, and this design with, um, with the reservation of the CMU wall for a future arts project and the, um, the request that the applicant work with city staff to decide an appropriate color for them, for what is now Bulldog Blue. An appropriate replacement color for what is now Bulldog Blue.
Thank you, Linda. So I have a motion of a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion by Budge, a second by Pulapati. Um, just to clarify before we, uh, vote on this, this will come back on a consent agenda that at that point we will see different colors. Is that, is that accurate, Jim?
Not if we simply add this as a condition of approval.
Right, but we're taking a motion today on an item that would come back on consent. Am I, is that an accurate statement?
No.
Mr. Vice Mayor, my, our understanding is that this would be placed as a condition on the project to work with staff to select appropriate colors and design. So it would not be coming back to the city council.
Yeah.
Understood. Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood is absent. Vice Mayor Terry?
Hi.
And council, I'd be happy to be involved in reviewing whatever that final version is.
Better you than me.
Yeah. I think the, uh.
I don't do it willingly.
Yeah. Really? You just offered. That seems pretty willy.
David, I can, I can get you some people to help you.
Yeah, I think the, I think the trouble you're going to have is that city seal is mostly that blue. It's that blue color, which is what they were trying to match. So you put red on the bottom, what the heck are you doing to the top?
Our city seal is a perfectly beautiful, multi-colored. It's got lots of green and brown and, and, uh, blue for the river and all sorts of colors in it. It is not mostly blue at all.
There's a lot of river in that one. I don't know, a lot of blue sky.
Vice Mayor Terry, I just want to make sure that you, I, I want to make sure that you open the public hearing for that item.
I don't.
I thought I did. Okay. Well, I'm opening the public hearing and closing the public hearing and we took our motion. Um, and we did not have any public comment.
Correct.
Yeah. I remember asking for that. Okay. Like I said, I'm rusty. Okay. Um, with that, we will move on to regular calendar items. And our first regular calendar item is item twelve point one, presentations of results from the twenty twenty one resident satisfaction survey. And, uh, Maria? Actually, before we move on, can we, Stacy, can we get the rest of the speakers that were from the last item out of Zoom, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Give us just a sec. Stefan, you're already here. This isn't even your item yet. Do you want to talk about this survey?
Sorry, it came, sorry for the confusion. This one is my item.
The survey is?
The, the survey, yep.
Oh, okay. I wouldn't have thought that.
I, I get the double headers this evening.
Yeah, I, I see it here now, Stefan and Maria. I just saw Maria's. Okay. Um, I think we're good to, oh, we got a, still got one in there. Okay. I think we're good. Go ahead, Stefan.
Okay, I, I'm assuming you're pulling up the presentation.
Hey, don't laugh. I'm pretty sure I took classes from Dennis Tuttalian at SAC State many decades ago.
I remember, he's the one that recruited me onto the business schools advisory board at one point. So, yeah.
You could explain your introduction. But I didn't, I didn't have anything as illustrious as that.
I didn't, I, I went back to grad school for a little bit, but not business school.
Well, good, good evening, Vice Mayor and city council and staff. My name is Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the city of Rancho Cordova. With me here tonight is our researcher, Dr. Dennis Tuttalian, and to present the results of our twenty twenty one resident satisfaction survey. Following our city trend, this is a survey that we do every two years. Uh, except we missed last year or we delayed last year's survey due to the significant disruptions of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, so this is the second time that we are working or we have worked with Dr. Tuttalian. And we've been very pleased with, uh, working with him in the process and are happy to have him here with us tonight to present the item. Uh, this, this is, uh, this is a summary of most of the results and many of the results in the report. But I do want to highlight that, uh, it is attached to this item and linked on our city website in the council agenda webpage. Um, and Dennis, please, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, we're, we're going to be covering quite a few different topics. So, um, questions are okay during the presentation. And with that, Dennis, I'll send it over to you.
Okay. Well, yes, first of all, the answer to the other questions are yes. I, I've been around there a long time, so I probably, I know many of you from, from my university days.
Funny.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to conduct the survey, uh, for the city and to make this presentation tonight. Uh, obviously, the last six, uh, eighteen months or so have certainly been challenging for all the city's residents. And I hope their responses to the survey are helpful to you. Uh, the set of slides I'll be presenting tonight were prepared by Stefan, uh, based on the report I put together. And I'll highlight some of the key findings. So the survey goals, as you can see up there, basically were to obtain resident views on how well city services are meeting, uh, resident needs. We asked questions pertaining to, um, living in the city of Rancho Cordova, their satisfaction with services offered and the customer service they received when they contacted the city, how safe they felt and the services provided by the Rancho Cordova Police Department, uh, the city's overall responsiveness, uh, to resident issues and concerns, and, uh, the resident satisfaction with the information available to them uh, on city programs and services and how they learned about the, the services. Uh, the sample itself, uh, we surveyed, uh, three hundred and fifty people, uh, over the age of eighteen. Uh, we did this by telephone, cellphone and landlines. And the survey was conducted in, uh, May, uh, starting at about May fourteenth. We'll show you some comparisons also to the latest, uh, to the last survey in, in two thousand and eighteen. And, and I, and I must caution you, you know, obviously when you've gone a couple of years, some environmental conditions change and, and I'll talk about those as we go through. So, uh, if we can go to the next slide, please. Excuse me. Uh, first of all, the respondent characteristics. I'll, I'll just kind of go down the, the column, uh, on the left of the screen first and then talk about the, the differences. Uh, it was a pretty even split between females and males. Uh, the single largest group, uh, were between the ages of forty and sixty-four. However, I, well, and I'll come back to that. And, uh, the incomes were, uh, the single largest group was above thirty-eight, thirty-eight percent, uh, was above a hundred thousand dollars. In looking at these compared to two thousand and eighteen, and of course, when we do a random survey, you never know exactly what you're going to get. Uh, it was a little difference between females and males and the percent, but those, that is the, we're, we're talking twenty, thirty people. I mean, we're, we're not talking very many in a difference. Uh, the age, uh, we definitely had, uh, fewer people aged sixty-five and older. Um, and, but on the other hand, if you took the forty-two years of age and over, that was seventy-one percent. And it was seventy percent in two thousand and eighteen. But nevertheless, there's no question, it's a, a younger group this year. Uh, the incomes, um, if you look, basically, they're, they're similar. If you look at the seventy, above seventy-five thousand, that's fifty-three percent, uh, compared to forty-seven, uh, under seven, seventy-five thousand or less. And that was almost exactly the same as in two thousand and eighteen. But nevertheless, we did, uh, have more in the above one hundred thousand and actually more in the less than fifty-one thousand. In terms of, um, homeowners, uh, as in the case before, we had, uh, mostly homeowners. There were a few more resident, uh, renters, but again, those numbers aren't that big a difference. The percentages look bigger than we're actually talking about in sheer numbers. In terms of the years they've been, um, living in the city of Rancho Cordova, uh, the single largest group is six to twenty years, which of course. group is six to twenty years, which of course is consistent with a younger age group. So we had them, we've had people living in the area a little less time uh than than in the previous study. And in terms of ethnicity, uh, you can see the 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 percentages there. Um, basically similar, except a few less Asian-American, but on the other hand, we did get more mixed race, um considerably more mixed race this time than before. In looking at this overall, there's some differences, but when we did uh uh test to compare responses based upon gender, age, income, years as residents of the city, and ethnicity, uh, then I I honestly could not say that there are some major differences in their responses. Um, so I don't know that these age differences between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty-one are all that significant. Uh, the next slide, please. Uh, the first, one of the first questions we asked them was whether they would agree or disagree with the statement, you can have a good quality of life living in Rancho Cordova. Um, twenty-seven percent said they strongly agree. Um, forty-eight percent said that um they agree. Uh, I'm sorry, fifty-eight percent, excuse me, fifty-seven percent. I had my slide kind of blocked there. Um, basically eighty-four percent strongly agreed or agreed uh with the statement, which um is similar to two thousand and eighteen, although obviously more people agreed this time than strongly agreed. Um, given what's happened over the last year and a half, overall, to to people's living conditions, um, I'm not overly surprised by that. But nevertheless, I think one of the other things that's important to note is the percent that disagreed with the statement, you could have a good quality of life, um, is basically the same. And one of the other reasons I'm not overly concerned about this particular thing is the next slide. But before I go to that, if if there's any questions, please feel free to stop me at any point. Okay, if we go to the next slide, um, one of the key questions would be is if they would recommend living in Rancho Cordova to a friend, and more people said yes this time uh than they did in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, we had more that said no, but I want to point out that that difference is a grand total of eighteen people out of three hundred and fifty. So again, the percentages, you gotta be a little careful about how important they are. So what we basically had from the last slide, we don't need to go back, eighty-four percent this time said strongly agree or agree that you can have a good quality of life versus eighty-two percent in two thousand and eighteen, and more this time said that they would recommend Rancho Cordova to a friend uh that we had before.
Um, so I have a question. Do you have like a breakdown of areas versus an entire Rancho Cordova?
Uh, we did uh we did Chi square tests comparing the results of by zip code. That's that's the best we could do. And um I don't believe, I'll have I'll have to take a quick look, but I don't believe there were any significant differences based upon geographic area. Uh, I I will have to, I'll I'll take a quick look at that uh in a couple of minutes. But I don't
Dennis, can I ask a question?
Report, uh, the the Chi square tests are in the report that were significant. I don't think that was one of them.
Can I ask a the same question in a different way? So from your your phone list that you used to sample from, were those cross-referenced with home addresses?
Those
Your data set?
Those were, no, those we straight, I I believe the 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 firm that did the actual interviewing, they they get the list, and I believe they they just buy the list based on the the three zip codes that we used.
There's two of those zip codes, a portion of both of, a portion of two of the zip codes aren't in the city. So I'm assuming there's some way that you narrow down within the zip code, because half of nine five eight two seven is in the county and half of nine five, well, not half, but a portion of nine five six seven O is also in the county. So there must have been some way
It was the city.
What that?
I will back up. They did, they did purchase the list of the city and they extracted um Gold River.
And Rosemont, which has a chunk that sat with, the zip code is Sacramento, yet it's in Rancho Cordova.
Oh, yes. No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm showing the zip codes. Sorry, I misunderstood. I'm showing the zip codes, but this was strictly city or Rancho Cordova.
Right. So I guess my my question would be is if you were able to determine it's within the city, there should be a way to determine what the address was of the phone number, because you would have had to have just figured that out in order to figure out what was in the city and what wasn't. So I I don't need the answer today. I'm just saying that I'm guessing somewhere embedded in the data set, we could get central track level data at least, because you'd have to have had that, because if you just used the zip codes, you'd be calling people, you could have potentially been calling people outside of the city. So there's got to be a way to figure out, at least in an aggregate level, where they were.
They, what you purchased from the 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 phone list and mailing list companies uh that I've always dealt with, um, and that's all I can speak to, is you tell them the cities you want, and they will extract it. You do not, you'll get data, uh, the numbers uh at, you know, if it's a phone survey, you'll get the phone numbers uh by zip code, but you will not have the addresses attached to them.
Yeah, I personally, I'm used to political campaigns and and you you get all of that, and I get that this is probably a little different. I'm just saying that if you were able to narrow it down to within the city, at some point, somewhere in there, maybe it's hidden, is an address, for sure, I would think. But, okay, moving on, but thank you.
Sure. Um, so, um, you know, most, the bottom line here is, most people um um think you could have a good quality of life living in the city, and they would recommend it to a friend. Um, the next slide, please. Uh, we asked people if the image of Rancho Cordova has gotten better uh or worse in the last two years. Uh, about uh, well, fifty-three percent said it's gotten better, only twelve percent said it got worse, thirty-five percent said it remained the same. Um, the um, the percentages are, again, very similar. The difference between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and eighteen was a total of fourteen people. So again, out of the three fifty. So again, most people thought it's gotten better, uh, at minimum stayed the same. Um, if we go to the next, um, we among those who said the image has gotten better, we asked them for their one main reason why, and the the most, single most common answer was improvements in the streets and infrastructure, twenty-seven percent said that. Um, twenty-three percent said the city's growth rate, and nineteen percent said attracting quality businesses. And I do want to point out, the city growth rate and attracting quality businesses, to me, kind of go hand in hand a little bit, and that represented forty-two percent of the responses as to why things got better. Uh, the other was kind of across the, just all kinds of different things. Um, there was about ten percent that said there was less crime, uh, better policing and less homelessness. Um, and five percent said cleaner city and better parks. One of the things we asked, uh, that we asked if they had any comments, and there were a number of comments, and this is in the report as well, uh, commenting positively about the new construction and the beautification and the painting that's going on. Uh, so the kinds of things that you've been doing and was talked about early in the um your city council meeting, uh, certainly are paying off. It looks like the people are really recognizing that. Um, in terms of the the next slide, please, uh, in terms of among the people who said things got worse, I want to point out here, I want to caution you about this. This represented twelve percent of the respondents, but the total of this group was forty-two people. So again, the percentages, you have to be a little careful about how important those were. Uh, the single largest group was the other, and that was forty-one percent, and those things were all over the board, from too many cockroaches to water bills being too high. A number of them dealt with the homeless population issues, however. Um, the second largest uh was the high crime rate of the police homelessness. This was a total of fourteen people. Uh, poor quality of streets and infrastructure was twelve percent. That was five people. So there really were not any, what I could see based upon uh a review of the the statements, and again, looking at the numbers of people who said worse, there's really nothing major here. Um, if I were to point to any one thing, I'd probably point to the homelessness issue um as being
Dennis, can I, can I ask a question on that? So
Sure.
Okay, high crime rate homelessness, I I can get, those are connected. What was the comments about police? Not enough, or in this new normal
It was
Some folks not wanting to fund police?
No, it would be more in terms of not enough police protection.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so anyway, uh, again, most people uh think the the image of the city has improved, and uh very few think it's it's become worse over the last two years. Okay, the next uh slide, please. Uh, before I get into this, we asked people to rate the city services, and this ranged to a whole, a variety of things. I want to point out what you're gonna see here is a a fairly large number of ratings of fair. And, you know, everyone, I I've been doing surveys, I hate to admit this, but I've been doing consumer surveys, next year will be forty years. Uh, so I've seen, I'm not gonna say I've seen everything, but I've seen a lot. And occasionally, you get uh you get a public, a a respondent group that kind of takes a middle-of-the-road approach, and it's sometimes hard to know whether they they're just saying that and to, you know, to get it over with, or whether they really mean it. Uh, in this case, I think they mean it. Um, because, however, I will say that if they said fair to the very first question of this series, uh, of how well the city is providing services, they were more inclined to say fair to all to a number of them, like four out of eight. So they they tended to be, if they said fair once, they they tended to say fair more often, but they didn't say it across the board. Uh, so it wasn't like they're, you know, get out of my hair, I'll just say fair, 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 and and move on, because they did distinguish based upon particular things. But nevertheless, this group, for whatever reason, said fair a little more often than I've seen than I saw in the in the last survey. Uh, having said that, however, all of the city attributes and city services that we included in this study, in that, uh, the majority rated uh the city as very good or good. Uh, garbage and waste, eighty-six percent. And again, I'm gonna point out that, take a look, not only if they're very good and good, but take a look at the poor and very poor. Very small numbers of people uh have rated the city very poor or poor on any of the services they provide. Um, and if there is differences between um two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and eighteen, it's it's this movement into the fair category. And I have no reason to believe they weren't being honest with it, again, because they didn't say fair across the board. So garbage, uh, yard waste and recycling pickup, uh, eighty-six percent rated very good. Almost nobody said poor, very poor. Providing police protection in your neighborhood, uh, sixty-six percent, very good, seven percent, poor, very poor. And coming back to the issue of, you know, what was the reason on the police, it's probably maybe, uh, this suggests to me it may be more a lack of police protection, uh, availability. Um, next slide, repairing and resurfacing streets, basically the same as the previous year, very high rating, seventy-four percent, uh, said very good or good. Maintaining the streets, cleanliness, lighting, seventy-nine percent, um, said that, uh, said very good or good. Again, very few said poor. Uh, next slide, please. Um, uh, planning for the future, fifty-one percent said very good or good. Uh, the thirty-five percent said fair and fourteen, poor and very poor. Um, this one, um, I, my my guess is, they probably, the the fair rating was there because they probably had, do not know, um, what the city does in terms of planning for the future. Um, you know, there's, they haven't been out, they haven't been at meetings, uh, no matter what you do, um, it's perhaps less likely that they that they knew. So if they don't know, they're gonna give perhaps a fair rate, you know, a middle-of-the-road rating uh than before.
And those two questions are a pretty substantial shift, planning and and the attracting one.
Yes. Um, well, they're 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 significant in uh the the movement from very good and good to fair. The the poor has stayed, the planning for the future, um, that one's a little higher, yes.
Professor, remind us when the the questions were asked?
They, the questions were asked between May, about May fourteenth and May thirtieth.
That's probably kind of important right now. Thank you.
Were any COVID-related questions asked?
I'm sorry?
Were any COVID-related questions asked?
No. No, I think I believe in the introduction to our survey, we kind of asked them to, if it, you know, uh, well, the wording we had is, we know everybody's been dealing with unusual conditions caused by the coronavirus, uh, but please only consider normal living conditions when the virus was not in our community. We asked them to try to minimize that. I don't know that anybody can totally eliminate it, but we asked them to to do it to the extent they could.
Got it.
The interesting part here, the attracting and retaining businesses, that was one of the strong points when we asked what's improved. Uh, when people said it got the play, uh, you know, the city's image has gotten better, it was attracting and, you know, attracting quality businesses. And yet, the we did have the fifty-five, only fifty-six percent say um very good or good. And again, um, you know, well, I I don't know. Uh, enforcing city requirements in the neighborhood, um, this was um pretty much the same, a few more fair, again, sixty percent rated very good and good. Uh, fewer said poor in this case. So in in looking at these, again, everything was, um, the majority in every case was very good or good. It did slip in some instances um from two thousand and eighteen, um, and the slippage was mostly from very good and good to fair, not to poor. The only one that went down any appreciable amount was the planning for the future of the city. Um, I have no explanation for that other than my guess being um that they just don't know. Uh, they don't know what's being planned, but um I I can't answer that. Um, the next slide? We asked if they had contacted, if they had contacted the city, how satisfied were you with the customer service you received? Um, excuse me, thirty-eight percent were very satisfied, thirty-two percent were satisfied, seventy percent overall were sat very satisfied or somewhat satisfied versus seventy-two percent in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the dissatisfied uh was fourteen percent, somewhat dissatisfied or very dissatisfied compared to twenty-two percent uh in two thousand and eighteen. Um, the um, the uh, this is among the people who had contacted uh the city. Um, the, one of the, you know, one of the issues, of course, is if they were dissatisfied, was it because they received poor service or they didn't get the answer they wanted? Uh, we did not ask that particular issue. Uh, it may be something in the future that might be worth exploring. Um, but again, relatively few people had been were dissatisfied, so I I don't know that it's all that important. You know, when you get seventy percent that are satisfied, uh, that's a pretty high percent. Obviously, you'd always like more, but nevertheless, that's a pretty high percent. Uh, next slide? Overall, how satisfied are you with the city's uh services? This slide is Um, this slide is wrong. Um, I think we had, um, the percentages are wrong. Uh, the eighteen percent on the top, uh, should be thirty-three percent.
Hmm, okay. That makes a lot more sense because those numbers are the same.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we had one that, there, there was one here that, you know, I thought we were going to get correct, unfortunately we did, anyway.
Yeah, sorry, my apologies if that makes up, sorry.
So it was thirty-eight and then.
It was thirty-eight percent is very satisfied, uh, in two thousand twenty-one. Eighteen percent, uh, is correct on two thousand eighteen. Somewhat satisfied is forty-three percent in two thousand twenty-one. So let me give you, uh, for the two thousand twenty-one, let me go down the line. Very satisfied is thirty-three percent. Somewhat satisfied is forty-three percent. Neither satisfied nor dissatisfied is eighteen percent. Somewhat dissatisfied, uh, is three percent. And very dissatisfied, that is corrected, two percent. So overall satisfaction, seventy-six percent are satisfied or very satisfied, um, in two thousand twenty-one. And that's the same percent as we had in two thousand eighteen. We have very few people, uh, who are dissatisfied. Um, what, five percent in two thousand twenty-one versus about four percent in two thousand eighteen. So overall, uh, consider, more people were very satisfied this year than, um, than last. A few less were dis, uh, somewhat satisfied. So there was a little shift between the very and somewhat satisfied. Next slide please. Um, we asked residents how safe they feel when they're in particular situations and, uh, excuse me, um, when they're alone, seventy-seven percent. And over, let me, let me back up here also. We asked this series of questions, this one and the, the one to follow. And we also got neither, um, a little bit more neither safe nor unsafe, uh, this time than we did, than we did last time. And again, this kind of goes with the fair ratings we got before. We tend to see, I looked at the actual data set and it said, tended to be the same people that were kind of on the neutral side of this. Um, so anyway, um, when they, when you're alone, somewhat or very safe, seventy-seven percent said they, that's how they felt. Uh, twelve percent were, felt, uh, somewhat or, uh, very unsafe, a little more unsafe this time. And that was kind of across the board, you'd see that. When they're in their neighborhood, it was pretty similar to, uh, two thousand eighteen, eighty-four percent felt very or somewhat safe. Uh, when you're at your local schools for meetings and events, this one, uh, we talked about, I talked about with staff a little bit because since there were no meetings, um, and events, um, the only thing I could think is the people interpreted how safe would they feel if they were at these events? And the safety here is probably influenced by COVID, I would, I would expect.
I was going to say, yeah, I would think that sending kids back to school has been a fear of parents and things like that, that.
Right, anything in public is going to do that.
Yeah.
They still didn't feel somewhat or very unsafe, but nevertheless, it slipped definitely from feeling somewhat or very safe to a more neutral position.
Dennis, are we going to get the cross tabs on this? Cause for like that question, I'd really like to see, was that, was that driven in large part by older residents? That, that didn't feel safe due to COVID over the last year?
I cross tabbed, well, I cross tabbed all of these, it's in the report, I.
And then, okay, okay, I'll go, I'll go look, okay.
Yeah, I, I cross tabbed every demographic characteristic with every question other than the one asking why it got better, why it got worse? Because there were so few responses in that, it, it just didn't make sense. Everything else was cross tabbed. I think there was a total of a hundred and eight, a hundred and sixty-eight cross tabs. Uh, the ones in the report, there was only forty-eight that were significant. Uh, and all forty-eight of those are in the report.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure. Uh, the next slide please. Um, when you're shopping in Rancho Cordova, uh, again, uh, we found a little more on the somewhat or very unsafe. And again, I gotta believe this is in, uh, a function partly or mostly of the COVID. Nevertheless, um, most people still felt somewhat or very safe. And when they're in the local parks, uh, again, a little slippage, uh, from somewhat or very safe to neither safe or unsafe. But very few felt, um, somewhat or very unsafe.
So, Professor.
Yes.
Don't you think, um, aside from the virus and health uh, uh, implications associated with that, that some of this might have to do with whether or not people are accosted by a panhandler or somebody homeless in the parking lot when they go outside?
And, you know, I think this year, the, the safety factor was a function of both, you know, physical safety, uh, you know, of violence, um, and COVID. Uh, whereas in two thousand eighteen, it was probably mostly physical safety related to some potential violent act. Um, what we didn't see in any of the comments though, about, that I can recall saying, I didn't see anything this time concerning being, um, you know, the homeless or having people come up to you or any, I didn't see any comments about that. Uh, the comment.
Good, that's good.
Yeah.
That means, that means our hot team and, and our merchants, uh, like some of our grocery stores we could name have combined to, um, or are, are, are working together to ensure that people don't just cluster around their doors or in their parking lots.
Could very well, yeah, it is. I, I saw nothing in any of, of the, the responses. Because the responses, any comments that they made were made verbatim and I've summarized them in the report. I don't re, I, I'm not going to say there was none, but I don't recall seeing a single one. Uh, they're in the report, but I don't recall seeing anything related to physical violence, uh, or any kind of feeling uncomfortable fit because of the physical proximity of one person to another. So that, that's about all I could tell you on that. Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, uh, next slide please. Uh, we asked, uh, residents to rate the Rancho Cordova Police Department on each of the following. Uh, and, uh, again, we found the fair factor came in. If, if they rated fair on the first question we asked, which was community involvement, they tended to rate more fair on others. Uh, about two to three out of every four other questions, they did. They didn't rate it across the board. If, I would have been concerned, again, as I mentioned before, if they said fair all the way across the board, that, that could mean they're not paying attention. They didn't do that. Uh, so, uh, but this group tended to give more fair, more neutral responses, uh, and, and I, I've seen it before, um, and it doesn't mean that that isn't how they really feel, by the way.
So, so quick question, so this was a verbal survey where like you would ask the first question and go, you know, what do you think about community involvement? It's very good, fair, poor or very poor? Is that how it was?
We had, we would say, we're going to give you, we're going to ask you to rate the police department. Um, let me grab the question. Uh, we're going to rate, ask you to rate the police department. Your, your, your choices are very good, good, fair, poor, very poor. And, and, and then we would say community involvement and they'd give an answer. And then helping citizen, would it be very good, good, fair, poor, very poor?
Yeah, it looks like most people like chose the neutral vote.
Pardon me?
It looks like most people like just chose the neutral vote, a fair, fair, fair. Not good, not bad, I'm good.
Well, I, I, let me, I, there's one other factor here that I need to point out to you. What we found in two thousand eighteen was we had a, a fairly large number of people, I don't remember the number now. A fairly large number of people who said, I've had no interaction with the police department and I couldn't answer. Uh, so the, we had people that just simply said, I can't answer these questions about the police department because I've had no interaction, no linkage. This year, everybody answered, and this tells me that they have opinions. Uh, whereas, you know, in two thousand eighteen, they didn't. Um, so I think that people were more opinionated, uh, this time. Uh, and it may be because of the events nationwide, um, related to police departments. Uh, that, you know, but, but for some reason, I, cause I went back to the data in two thousand eighteen and, and it's, it's in the report. Uh, we had a considerable number of people said, I, I have no idea, I haven't dealt with the police department. And, um, so I can't rate them. This time, I think that probably those type of people probably put in fair as opposed to anything else. Um, and it may very well be based upon if, if they had no interaction or no linkage, um, uh, it may be more of a nationwide statewide kind of issue. The, the point I do want to make though, however, is, you know, of all, all the factors we, we, uh, we asked them about, they rated all, you know, for every one of them, the majority of respondents rated the police department very good or good. And again, if you, what I tend to look at more is the poor, very poor. And there's, there's very few people that are rating them poor. I mean, even when you get, you'll get some people who are just naturally going to do a middle of the road type of thing. And that may very well be how they believe. But if they have opinions, but they definitely don't have an opinion of the police department as being poor, very poor when it comes to community involvement, helping citizens, um, and being responsive to crime trends, these three, you know, these three factors. And, uh, let me just take one quick look.
Dennis, not to rush you, but we do have a pretty weighty item next.
Okay, okay.
We get you going unless there are questions.
Okay, uh, before you move to the next slide, you know, we'll wrap this up pretty quickly here. Uh, the same.
Well, just to get the question, that's all I want to make sure we're, we're covering.
But thank you. Uh, treating people fairly, uh, and being able to respond quickly, again, the same way, most uh, rated the police department very good or good, very few rated them poor, very poor. Um, next slide. Um, in terms of city responsiveness, uh, to resident concerns, uh, seventy-three percent rated the city very good or, or they were very satisfied or somewhat satisfied um, with this, that the city tries to be responsive, pretty much the same as what it was in two thousand, um, eighteen. Again, very few people, uh, were dissatisfied, that was about seven percent. Uh, next slide. Information, how well does the city inform residents? Uh, sixty-two percent said they were, they did a very good or good job. Uh, eleven percent had, um, uh, poor, very poor. Uh, I think one of the interesting things was if you look at the right side of the slide, the main source of information, radio, television, newspaper, went from twenty-seven percent down to ten percent. Uh, if you look at the bottom three there, city mailers, city website, city digital news, uh, that comprised forty-eight percent of the responses. Um, so almost half of the people, uh, in the city get information about city programs and services from city sources. Um, as opposed to new, the media, word of mouth, social media obviously is picking up as well.
Oh.
So Professor, look, look though at, at how significant the printed material is or has become versus the, um, the digital material. That's very, that's very interesting because we, you know, we made an affirmative decision quite some time ago to drop our city, um, our, our printed city newsletter and go to social media. And of course, we've never been able to recapture the number of, there's a difference between sending a mailer out to everybody who lives in, every address in the city as opposed to relying on people to sign up for social media, whether it's through the website or the digital newsletter or whatever. And yet, um, the printed material remains high.
It does. It does.
Interesting.
And, and if you think that also.
If I'm understanding this right, social media dropped from.
No.
No, doubled.
Media went up.
So it went up.
Twenty-four versus twelve, it doubles.
So then, uh, Linda, that means it's dropped, right, to ten percent? The newspaper, radio and television, is that how you're reading it?
Uh, no, no, Siri, I'm reading it.
Emailers.
That, if you just look at the blue, the top blue, city mailers, posters and printed material.
Mm-hmm.
In the past, it's been only twenty percent, but today it's twenty-eight percent. And you're right, then social media right above it went from only twelve percent to twenty-four percent. So I suppose if you added the twenty-four percent and then the website eleven percent and the nine percent digital newsletter, then you would get uh, a number that is larger than the, than the printed material at twenty-eight percent. But still, from my perspective, knowing how we lost people when we were not sending things to them on a quarterly basis in their mail.
Yeah.
It still is a significant number, it's some, it's really some, we just, we should not automatically, we should, just should not automatically assume that people are using social media or digital media to get their information. That's my point.
Right.
Uh, you can add to that the fact that this is a younger group this year than in two thousand eighteen too. If it was the other way around, I'd say, well, the old folks want the materials. I'm, I'm one of the old folks.
We do, we do.
And, um, you know, but this is a younger group, so.
Well, and the fascinating thing about it regardless of the demographic is we're sending out way less than we were two years ago, yet they're relying on it more.
Absolutely.
That's, I think that's the fascinating thing here is there's less material, yet they're saying it's more valuable.
Yeah.
You know, you do need to keep in mind also that this year people are, you know, were more homebound. Um, so they, they probably receive things and are opening things and maybe looking, I mean, it, it's, it's a, you know, I'm speculating obviously, but.
Yeah.
No, it's good, they read their mail instead of throwing it in the round file.
Right, exactly. That, so, uh, overall, let me just very quickly summarize, the vast majority, uh, uh, if we go to the next slide please. Uh, the, I think it's the last one, very quickly, the vast majority of people thinking have a good quality of life in Rancho Cordova and they'd recommend it to their friends, the image has gotten better. Uh, they've noticed the beautification processes in the construction. They have some, they did have some concerns about homelessness, um, that, that did come out. Uh, the majority rated services as good, very few people rated them poorly. They're satisfied with the services, they feel safe, but although not quite as safe as what we saw in two thousand eighteen. Again, it may be partly due to COVID as well as other environmental factors. They rated the police department very good or good and, uh, very few rated them poor. They think the city tries to be responsive, um, and tries to, and, and tries to inform the, uh, the residents and the, 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 the sources of information tend to be mostly city generated. And that's my report. Are there any other questions?
Um, let's see, let's first go with, um, Stacy, do you have any public comments on this item?
Yes, we do. Uh, I'm going to start with Autumn.
Okay, go ahead, take that.
Autumn, I'm going to unmute you and you'll have three minutes.
Thanks Stacy, can you guys hear me?
Thanks, Stacy. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Uh, hi, this is Autumn Eberhart from Cordova Meadows. Um, and this is really interesting data, and I have, uh, two questions and two statements. Um, how were the three hundred and fifty people selected? And, um, you only reached about a half of a percent of the population? And is there a plan to make the survey electronic and open it up to the entire city? Um, and then my statements are, I think the mailers are more impactful because on social media you have to like catch a post and there's a lot of information overload. And so if you don't see something right when it's posted, it can get buried by a bunch of other posts. Or if you don't sign on every day, you might not see it. And the mailer comes right to your house or the paper material. Um, and then my other statement is that, um, if you'd like your planning number for the future to go up, the percentage, um, maybe you want to reconsider the direction for the civic center. Thank you.
Again, may I answer quickly those, first of all, the, 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 uh, the three hundred and fifty are randomly selected. It's, it's a random sample, so statistically valid. Uh, I ran, uh, standard deviations on all of the questions, again, other than the one on why better, why worse? Uh, and to see what the error level was. The error level was, it's, it's based on what you're measuring and the highest error level was less than one quarter of a category. So statistically, it's, it's a good result, it's a good survey. Um, going electronically, um, that's, it's possible to do some of that to, but you also have a totally different, uh, group of people, uh, that respond that way.
The next public comment, if you're ready, Vice Mayor Terry?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is, um, FISA, FISA, you'll have three minutes and I've just unmuted you.
Uh, hi, everyone, this is FISA in Lincoln Village. Um, I guess if you really wanted to know the level of satisfaction from residents who are majority white, majority homeowners and earning greater than seventy-six thousand a year, then you'd be highly satisfied with these results. Uh, but when you care about communities that are different and live in them and are members of them and see they're not reflected, uh, you don't really feel satisfied with these results. I think that we, and I know it's random, I guess, also there's issues with trust. If somebody's asking to do a survey or community is typically skeptical. But if you guys had, I mean, made a little more effort for a better cross-section, which is a theme with a lot of my public comments, uh, because there's a gap here. We're not including a lot of our residents. Random or not, when you see that there's sort of an unevenness like this, uh, we're getting like a six percent rate of, uh, black respondents, but we have more than that. I think that's like nine or a little higher percentage of our residents are black. Um, we can do better than that, and I think that we should target those communities or target to include them whenever we collect data like this. Uh, it is, is what I call a crack in our equity lens. We kind of just don't pay attention to that. I feel like this, this survey is like watching a scary movie through your hands. So you're seeing the parts you kind of want to see and then like not really seeing the rest of the movie. You're not getting the whole picture here. Um, so it is a snapshot of a particular demographic and it's important to look at it that way. But I think it's important to also hear from who typically is underrepresented in our city. Uh, that's all my, of my comment, thank you.
Next public comment?
That's the last public comment that we had for this item.
Okay, nobody in the room, okay. Uh, Council, questions for staff?
You know, I think, um, statistical polling is, is difficult to, to sort of understand and grasp. Um, statistics I get, I think are challenging for people. Um, I know, uh, you commonly hear people say things like, well, I wasn't asked, therefore it's not a valid survey. We didn't hear that objection tonight, but, uh, I think we have to rely on, on professionals to tell us that we're getting, you know, a statistically valid sample in a survey instrument like this. And if we're not, that is a, that is a real concern. Um, because I certainly do not want to be sitting here drawing conclusions based on a population sample that's not reflective or, or accurate. But at the same time, if it's just a result you don't like, uh, you've got to, you've got to measure by the same, by the same standard, you know? Did we hit the statistical, uh, point of, uh, significance or not? And regardless of the outcome, you, you're going to have to live with it. So I think that's always a challenge, anything survey, anything reported to the city, any outreach we do can always be attacked as not adequate, not reaching a certain population. Perhaps just because it doesn't agree with what someone wants to, wants to hear in it. I just want to caution everyone as the science guy, you know, results are results. Um, but Doctor, if you've got any comments about that, because I'm sure wherever you go and present statistical data, you probably, probably hear concerns like that from the community. I just thought it'd be interesting to hear from you on that. And the, the only other question I had for you was, you know, our community, just like every other community in the United States, has been through this enormously emotional and challenging COVID year and a half. Um, do you see any trends nationally that you see reflected here?
And, uh, well, first of all, in terms of the statistical accuracy, it is always possible that you could get a, a totally, um, uh, unrepresentative sample. I mean, it, you know, if you flip a coin a hundred times, you should get heads fifty times. It is possible you could hit tails ninety times. I mean, it's always possible. Uh, however, when you run the statistical test and, uh, to check how much the responses vary, uh, the more they vary, the less reliable your, your results are. You know, and if everybody said the same thing, then all I'd need is one person. Um, so, um, when I ran the, the, the standard deviations, I didn't find a lot of variation. Um, and if you take, go back and even look at the results, you'll see that most, you know, when you get seventy percent say good or very good, there's, you know, or when you see those high percentages doing that, it, it tells you, and, and you only get four, five, six, seven percent saying poor, very poor, um, it tells you that you've got a pretty valid sample. The, the scariest would be if I had fifty percent said very good or good and fifty percent said poor and very poor. Then I got some real concerns. There was nothing even remotely close to that. We ran chi-square tests to, to look at the demographics, um, each of the demographics to see if there was a lot of variation by young, old, um, in, by income, by, uh, by gender, by ethnicity. Although the ethnicity one, I, I have to say, because we did have a few categories, um, that were not highly represented. Um, I did run, um, but I ran all of those kinds of things. And in the report, you'll see the ones that were significant. And even there, drawing conclusions from those, that how much difference there was, I had a hard time doing that. And I've been, like I said before, I've been doing this for forty years. Um, so I'm comfortable that these are good results. However, I do also think that, you know, what people have been through this year makes it better to look at this, the results for this year and not compare quite as much to two thousand eighteen because people have been through something they've never been through before. And how that affected, how they would respond, how they feel about living anywhere would be this way. Uh, I have only seen a few things at the national level. Um, and suggested, you know, people aren't overly happy in their communities. They like their communities, but, um, you know, what they've been through in every community has been very difficult. It's, you know better than I do. I, I hope I answered your question, if not, um, I'll certainly try to expand on it.
You did, thank you, and so I, I just recommend that. Uh, Donald's question about cross tabs, I think, was also getting at that, that same question, you know?
And they're in the report.
Yeah, are there, are there particular questions here that really deviate, you know, by age or, or race or, or income level? And I think what you're telling us is that there's not a lot of, uh, of deviation of those cross tabs.
Not a lot, the, nothing that I, if, if I saw something that I thought was really signif, you know, a major one, I would have, I would have brought it up. I didn't see anything that I, I could say, wow, this is something you really need to pay attention to. I didn't see it.
So Professor, just to.
Dennis, please, Dennis.
To go back, to go back and, um, uh, kind of, uh, refresh from your original, um, comments. Um, so the survey truly was, um, randomly selected from all over the community. It's not like certain areas were targeted. Um, I don't begin to understand how you do that. But I'm sitting here with a, um, an interesting map that was, that came out on Next Door yesterday. Came from the US Census Bureau and it's this funny scatter chart that you can't see about race and ethnicity across the nation. And you can actually zero in on Rancho Cordova. And just as we all suspect, we are, in the seven major ethnicity groups or cultural groups that the Census Bureau is looking at, we are as incredibly, uh, diversely scattered throughout the city limits of Rancho Cordova as anyplace else you could possibly imagine. So one would assume that if your, um, survey, uh, was also broadcast in that same kind of scatter pattern, then you would have the same probability of tapping into a lot of the different cultural groups that we have in town.
Uh.
Yeah, I, I, I actually kind of want to speak to that, some of my questions. Um, but Siri, did you have any questions for Dennis?
No.
Okay, I was just going to point out, and I, this is just, I just Googled and looked at demographics of Rancho Cordova. But if we brought up slide three and you compare what I'm looking at, fifty-nine point six, sixty-two percent of our residents are Caucasian and we got fifty-eight percent. Asian-Americans were undersampled by about four percent, it looks like, maybe five percent, because I've got thirteen and a half and we're getting seven. Latinos are about eleven and a half percent and we oversampled by about a half a percent. Um, African-American, FISA's right, the sampling's six and it looks like it's about nine. Um, but what we really seem to have, um, increased, if I look at the, um, from the demographics that have some other race or two or more races would be about eight and we're getting about seventeen. So you have people that may or may not feel that they fit into certain buckets here. Um, also, if you compare eighteen and sixteen, we are a very high-growth community. So it, and we're also becoming a much more expensive community as home values are, are increasing. So to see that, you know, people that are buying new homes in the new areas and that's where most of the growth is happening, are going to need to make over a hundred thousand if they want to afford a home in California or in Rancho Cordova. So, uh, as I look at these demographics and, um, I know David's a scientist, but for my undergrad, I studied political science and I took a lot of classes on this kind of stuff. Um, this, this information lines up with a lot of what we're seeing. And also, I think what I heard from Dennis, uh, multiple times is a lot of the, a lot of the numbers that came down that were very satisfied, if you look at, and I remember this from before and, and he was pointing out, we had a lot of people that just said, I don't have an opinion, therefore they weren't counted into the counts. Now they're coming back and we have this explosion, in my opinion, of everything's okay. And they're saying that more than they're saying, I don't have an opinion. So it's getting counted in a way that, that, that skews these numbers in a lot of ways. At least that's what I'm seeing from cross tabs and what I'm, what I'm recalling from past, um, surveys is we just had a lot more people that said, I don't know. And now I think they've probably been at home a lot more this year and maybe even watching a little bit more social media. And now they have an opinion that's okay, but not great and not really bad. But we weren't seeing the bad numbers explode. And I don't think we can point to any one decision or project that we're working on that, that would, that we did it. But the demographic numbers to me look fairly accurate. You're going to see them not be exact because it's a random sample. Um, but three hundred and fifty people for a, a community of about seventy-five, eighty thousand people is a statist, statistically significant sampling. Um, and I think, you know, to, to some of the, uh, members of the public's question about, you know, this can be helpful to everybody, the point of this is to get a representative sample. Um, again, if we put this on the website and we had people share it with all their friends and convince everybody to go and answer it the way that they're telling them, that's not necessarily representative of the entire community because we have people that are happy that aren't going to their friends and saying, go tell people, you know, this is bad or don't do it. Um, and that's, that's, again, that's one of the, this is a tool that the city uses to understand what's going on in the city. Obviously, we have public meetings, we do public outreach, um, people send us emails, people send us social media, uh, posts. Uh, and those are all things that we would use. And again, this is just one piece of what any of us use to help understand what's going on in the city. It's not, and it's definitely not the only thing that we are looking at.
There, if I could add one thing, Donald, I agree with you totally. Um, there, there's a couple of things that can be done in the future i- if, if you have concerns. I mean, obviously, one is to increase the sample size. Um, I don't know that you're going to get anything different, but if that adds to. If that adds to the believability, uh, that might be something. Another way is to do this basically like we've done, but then take an oversample, and I'm going to make up a number, of a hundred people who are of, um, minority, uh, ethnicity. And, uh, you know, and target those areas, um, that, where we might find more people who are Asian-American or Latino or African-American. Um, and say, let's say we did fifty of those or a hundred of those. Don't put it into the survey results itself. Uh, but take out from the survey that, plus this extra sample, and you could do something with, uh, looking strictly at minority, um, um, responses. Um, so you can oversample, but not, you know, just, uh, as a side study of it. That's, that's a way of, of, of looking to make sure that you've got, um, you, you've done something, uh, for those that are in minority groups. Uh, without jeopardizing the ability to compare over time, uh, your overall survey.
Yeah, I, I mean, personally for this exercise, the point of this is to have a scientifically conducted survey.
Right.
To, to see, because again, there are a lot of people that are happy here that aren't sending emails and, and, and other things about certain issues. Um, and so it, again, it's a helpful tool, but it's definitely not the only thing that I, I'm guessing any, me or any of my colleagues are solely basing our decisions or the direction of the city on.
I would not, I would not recommend you do that. No, that's right.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions for staff, Council? Okay, thanks, Dennis, thanks, uh, Stefan for giving us the update.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm assuming there is no action to be taken here, right, Adam? Yeah.
Uh, no, Mr. Vice Mayor, this was informational only.
Thank you. Um, and so with that, we'll move on to item twelve point two, manufactured home park local control discussion. And this one, I knew we were going to have Stefan present, so, go ahead, Stefan. Stefan, if you're talking, we can't hear you.
Nope, not yet, sorry, just waiting for the, the slide to come over to me.
Okay.
I don't, I don't like that awkward pause.
Me either.
For Stephanie, I don't, there we go.
Nope, we're back at the survey.
Yep, wrong one.
Nope. Still the survey.
There we go.
There we go.
Oh. Okay. All right, very good. Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council, and staff. Again, my name is Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the city of Rancho Cordova. Here for this item as well are Russ Ducharme, our Neighborhood Services Division Manager, and Joe Cuff, our Building Official. The background and context of this discussion is really important, so I have a slide dedicated to that in just a bit. So just to go over the quick goals of this presentation, staff will be presenting three topics. First, information on the existing space rent conditions and the situation, and manufactured home parks conditions in the city. Secondly, information and recommendation on assuming code enforcement and building code responsibility. And then third, information and assessment of space rent control policies, or space rent stabilization. And then the second agenda, or the second piece of this would be to receive public comments and council direction on next steps on these points. So the, the important discussion for this meeting, on February first, the city council met and received a presentation from our city attorney regarding information about the city's ability to assume code enforcement and building code responsibility, and secondly, the city's legal ability to enact space rent control policies, or rent stabilization ordinance. At that meeting, the city council requested several pieces of information for continued discussion, including existing space rent levels in the city's parks, and other local information, the experience of other jurisdictions who have taken over or assumed responsibility of code enforcement responsibilities, and as well as the cost and effectiveness of other space rent control policies in our state. So we'll be answering those questions this evening. So first off, the information about existing space rents and park conditions. City of Rancho Cordova has eight parks, I know there was some debate about that. Our, our official number is eight, comprising one thousand three hundred and forty-five units. One of these parks is age-restricted to persons fifty-five and older, which is Mobile Country Club on Sunrise Boulevard. The space rents that we found through conversations, interviews with our residents in parks, as well as a couple of the park management and owners, range from six hundred dollars, in the range of six hundred per month, to over one thousand dollars per month. These are increasing, from what we could tell, somewhere between three percent to over five percent, depending on the park. Two parks, Mobile Country Club and Colonial Estates, appear to be increasing the fastest of our parks. And of course, as you might expect, residents who are on fixed incomes are the most sensitive to annual increases. Coupled with this, in our conversations, we, we, we asked about utility costs, but these were not mentioned as being issued. And you can see in the sidebar over there, for context, about the increases in apartment rents in Rancho Cordova, it's really not, it's really just for context, not a very good comparison, because mobile homes are not mobile, they are, they are fixed. So they're a bit of a captive asset versus apartments where you can remove all of your assets when you leave. But you can see that, sort of, for context, what, how percentage rates were increasing between twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen. Also, in our conversations, we found that the quality of park management varies across parks. Somewhat concerningly, we heard from a lot of residents that they mentioned concerns about raising issues with park management, citing retaliation or undue attention or those kinds of things. And then park amenities varied in number, quality, maintenance, as well as access across the parks. I'll pass it over to Russ Ducharme to talk about the code enforcement and building and safety, for pieces of this.
So, good evening, Vice Mayor Terry, council members and staff, Russ Ducharme, Neighborhood Services Manager. Yes, so in doing our research for this presentation, we did reach out to three jurisdictions, Hesperia, Folsom, and Fresno. They did take over mobile home parks from HCD not too long ago. To put it in perspective, the eight parks and thirteen hundred and forty-five units is equivalent to Cap Village and Villages of Zinfindele combined, just to have some perspective. So in our research, we found three areas to consider when taking over the responsibilities here. So one would be the responsibilities, what does that exactly entail? The process in which we need to follow in order to take over said responsibilities, and then once we have those responsibilities, the process to follow, that's parallel with HCD, and then staffing impacts and considerations. So our responsibilities would increase by being responsible for all the permanent structures that are within these parks, so that includes the homes, the clubhouses, pools, garages, sheds, carports are very common, any similar structures. And then enforcement of any special occupancy parks. So all of our RV parks are temporary RV parks, and any of the structures located within those parks. And then obviously, the administration of annual park or operation permits and logistics involved with this function, including collection of fees. So the fees for annual inspections, building permits, and any of the discretionary use permits. And I'll pass this off to Joe.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Terry, council members and staff, Joe Cuff, Building Official. So, looking into the process for assuming responsibility to enforce the codes for the city, it is a pretty complex process. And just to put some more perspective on it, we would not be taking over jurisdiction just responsibility. The State of California Housing and Community Development Department still retains its jurisdiction, but we would be enforcing codes. So we would still be making reports on a regular basis to HCD, we would still be making sure they're left in the loop on any permits that we issue, so we would still be involved with them. They would also still be issuing certain permits for certain types of work. So it's not us or them, it would be both of us at the same time. This is an involved process, meaning we would have to give written notice to the state and pass an ordinance saying that the city would like to take over that responsibility. The State of California then has between thirty and ninety days to do an investigation to see if the city can actually perform these duties. They will come in, they will interview us, they'll look at our processes, look at our staffing, look at how we're certified, to see if we have the manpower and the wherewithal to be able to handle these types of permits. They can say no. If we don't have the staffing up to date, and we don't have the certifications behind us to do this work, they can turn us down and, and just go back to normal. So what we're looking at is a long, involved process that could take up to ninety days, and then we would still have to add some people with proper backgrounds and training. More than likely, we'd have to add some staff to both departments, both Neighborhood Services and Building, to perform these inspections and these code enforcement actions, which of course would mean increasing staffing for more expertise. There's also a slight fee issue in that, if we decide to do this and we go forward, and then somewhere along the line, the city decides that this was not a great idea, I think we'll give this back to the state, we have to return everything we've collected from that point forward back to the state. So records, fees, that weren't used for that particular fee year, all have to be returned back to the state. So we'd be going through another process to give it all back to them as well. Or, they can do an audit and see if we're fulfilling our duties correctly, based off of their requirements, and they could take it away. So, there's always a back and forth with HCD, we don't actually lose contact with the state, and they will always be involved in this process. Slide. Oh, yeah. So, just keep in mind that this is specialized training. We currently do not have staffing that has ever inspected or enforced the codes within mobile home parks. It's a rare thing in this area, there are very few jurisdictions that do this, and you do have to get specialized certification to do it, and the state will require that before they'll allow us to take over that responsibility. The codes that are required to be enforced in a mobile home park are different than building codes we're used to. It's a completely different section of California codes, and they do have to be followed the same way HCD would follow them. We have to follow their rules, their standards, and the way that they collect fees, just like they would. So that's a lot of, there's a big learning curve there that we would have to catch up on pretty quickly, within, at least within ninety days of making the declaration that we wanted to take over those responsibilities. Next slide.
Thank you, Russ and Joe. I'll, I'll cover a couple of slides about space rent control policies as well.
Can I, can I ask a quick, uh, private question to the last slide? There's nothing to say that we couldn't ramp up staffing then given the ninety-day notice, right? So we could decide that's where we're going, but not spend in the declaration. We could take six months to do it if we wanted to, right?
Certainly.
Or two, okay, okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Stefan.
Okay, so, of the investigation that we did across the state as far as space rent control policies or ordinances that have been enacted in California, eighty-three cities and nine counties in California have some version, none of them are identical, but they all have some space rent control of some form. The, the annual price increases range across these jurisdictions from about fifty percent of the Consumer Price Index on the low end, so very low, if that's your limit, up to, we saw ordinances that would allow up to eight percent increases per year, which is really more of an anti-gouging type of ordinance. Many of these increased, price increases were tied to a percentage of CPI, the Consumer Price Index, either fifty percent, seventy-five percent, one hundred percent, or they were set by a board or commission. Ordinances across the board can be as flexible or as specific as, as determines the, the local conditions or situation of the, of the jurisdiction. On the simple side, they tended to have automatic increases, very, very clearly defined examples of, of what happens, what can happen, what cannot happen, as well as simple noticing requirements. On the complex side, there were fees for, for residents to participate, there were multiple exemptions, in some cases exempting most of a jurisdiction, a complex eligibility requirement, and unclear situations requiring expensive legal counsel interpretation. So what happens when you sell your unit, what happens when you inherit a unit, what happens when, when a park needs to make infrastructural improvements, those kinds of things. Jurisdictions contacted had overhead ranging from, or staff levels, working on specifically space rent control, ranging from less than ten percent of one person to more than fifty percent of a full-time employee. These costs seemed to increase based on the number of units in a jurisdiction, as well as the noticing requirements and the amount of legal assistance needed. And what we heard across the board was that the first couple of years of any new ordinance always had higher costs. The enforcement of the rent control ordinances was typically, across jurisdictions, typically complaint-based, and as well as, again, more enforcement being required during the first couple of years of the new ordinance, people kind of figuring out what it is and how it applies to them. But once, once that had a couple of years of going around the cycle, then people became a lot more used to it. The typical outcomes from these ordinances that we found did stabilize space rents. You, in one jurisdiction, we heard about some parks shifting costs to utility fees that were not regulated, but could be regulated under an ordinance. Some jurisdictions, as I mentioned, offered pretty large exemptions, which limited the applicability. From the jurisdictions we contacted, none of them indicated any kind of increased deferred maintenance on the parks. And, and one owner, one property manager of parks, mentioned that across the, the rent control parks that they work with, the home values tended to increase in, in those parks. So with that information, we do have a recommendation on the code enforcement responsibility. At this time, staff does not recommend assuming code enforcement responsibility, but does recommend continuing to communicate with HCD regarding enforcement issues and collaborate when possible. We don't have a specific recommendation on the space rent control. There's a couple possible next steps below that we could consider and take public comments, as well as council direction. And of these, they include continuing to, to monitor increases and fair housing complaints, and provide updates to council, or start to convene more meetings to discuss potential policy options.
Okay. Thanks, Stefan. Stacy, do we have any public comments on this?
Yes, we do. The city clerk's office received a few written public comments via email. I'm going to read those names off. They've been emailed to the city council, and they've been printed for those in attendance at our meeting tonight, and they are in the back of the room. The first public comment is from Kathy Neal. The second public comment is from Mike Salmon. The third public comment for this item is from Helen Fredericks. The fourth public comment for this item is from Robert Van Cleef. Next, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to take the speakers that are in the room who have submitted public speaker cards. The first person I'm going to ask to come forward is Robert Van Cleef. Following Robert is Barbara Tommen, I hope I said your name correctly. And you'll have three minutes, and then I'll look to Zoom to find hands that are raised.
Good evening. I'd like to start out by thanking the council for initiating this process, this is something we've been looking for, for quite a while. And I also want to thank the staff, because I do believe they did an excellent job of a first pass in this thing. I would like to recommend one item for, going forward, and that is to do a real survey of what the impact of the rents are. In the item that I sent by email, I gave an example of the ones that were done by Helen and I at MCC back in twenty eighteen and nineteen. They were sort of informal, because we're not trained at that, but they showed what the impact on the people in the park were, and it was quite severe, if you look at it. And I won't go over it now, but it was quite severe. In fact, there were a couple of people that we commented on the side of our reports that were in the eighty percentile range, there was their rent in utilities. Twenty percent of their income was allowed for food, medicine, and anything else. And one commented on, asked about it, the management said, oh, well, they need to talk to their parent, their children, their children need to help them live. That's not quite the way it should work. And what we also could not do was go to the other parks and do a survey. And you've got eight parks in the community, I'd like to see a survey of all eight of them as to what the impacts are across the decade, because I work with a couple of senior ladies in the other parks, and they're doing really, really bad. There's an eighty-year-old woman who doesn't know how she's going to survive, month to month, and yet, their parks, oh, well, it's life, it's business. So I would like to, looking to do in the survey, but I'd like to thank you for what you've done.
The next speaker is Barbara.
Can I take it down? Is it okay, or do you want me to keep it up? Good evening, thank you for having us here. My persp, I wasn't really sure how, what I was going to be saying. What I'd like to say is, I'd love to have code enforcement in our parks, our rent control would be great. Our management is, management, it has no code enforcement, we're turning in, we have a nice mobile home park, but it's turning into a trailer park. I'd like to have a nice place to live, to get the police in there to do some things. They can't do anything, it's private property, there's no code enforcement, it's all management. There's one person, she's one manager, and she's understaffed, she can't, she can't handle the job. We need help. And if you guys could help us, it'd be pretty awesome. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, I'm going to Zoom now, and the first speaker is FISA. So FISA, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to unmute you. And you'll have three minutes.
Hi, everyone, this, this is FISA in Lincoln Village. As you know, the city has something like nine mobile communities, six of them in, in the Lincoln Village Countryside Planning Area. When you look at the housing element, it shows that Rudyard Road and Horn Road contain severely cost burdened residents. That means they're paying seventy percent and greater on just making rent. So I echo Bob's comments, our community there can't really afford to live, they need assistance. And I would really like to thank Stefan, Russell, and Joe for their report, their time and energy. And I would really like to thank Stefan, Russell, and Joe for their report, their time and energy. I think the city, if this is a no and staff is recommending no, I think that still some kind of resources and energy should be dedicated towards supporting our residents in our mobile communities. I'm glad, I learned recently, Rebuilding Together will do home repairs on our residents in the mobile parks. So there's programs for you, if you live in a mobile home and you need repair and you can't afford it. There are programs that the city has where they can come in and do some kind of critical system repairs and other repairs to your property, disability, access, ramps, and bar, grab bars and other such things. I want residents out there not to feel discouraged. Hopefully, the city will help them a little more. And I really do appreciate you guys dedicating time and just like airtime towards a subject like that. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Mike Patterson. Mike, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. You'll have up to three minutes.
Mike, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. Are you on mute?
Look, he must speak. Hi, I'd like to also thank the council for taking this issue under consideration and thank Bob Van Cleef because he's in my park, Mobile Country Club, and he's a very, very active resident. I'd just like to make a few comments about the previous legislation, which points out exactly how bad it can be. There was a bill called AB, sorry, can you still hear me?
We can hear you, Mike. Go ahead.
All right. It was a bill, AB fourteen eighty-two, which was passed some time back, that actually, actually tried to protect residents, mobile home park residents, from excess increases by introducing a form of rent control, which was rather weak. But in that bill, there was a loophole that allowed mobile home parks to impose long-term leases to be exempt from rent control. And in a local park, I believe it was Glenbrook, they've been pressing those people to accept twenty-five-year leases in anticipation of rent control coming to the mobile home park. So the park owners are being proactive in trying to get out of having to subscribe to any kind of rent control, even in senior parks. SB nine ninety-nine was introduced to try to close that loophole, but that bill closed, died in committee. So right now, we're exposed to that. If they wanted to come into my park and try to get me to accept a twenty-five-year lease, they could probably do that and lean on it. So that's one of my concerns. Just regarding the increases, I've only been in Mobile Country Club for two years, but in talking to residents, the increases keep coming, keep coming, at a rate of three to five percent. And that rate will take all of my social security cost of living increase, leaving nothing to pay for other inflationary price increases. And as somebody else pointed out, as rents go up, the perception of the mobile home park to potential buyers when you decide to sell your mobile home goes down. Because nobody wants to pay a very high space rent. It makes them unattractive. That's pretty much it, the high point. I'll let somebody else speak, but those are the things I wanted to go over. And thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Helen Fredericks. Helen, I've unmuted you and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, Helen. Go ahead.
Okay. First, I want to thank the city council for looking into this and Stefan and all that worked on this. This was great. I've been coming to city council meetings since twenty eighteen and talking about the, twenty eighteen and nineteen. Last year, I was a hermit. I have congestive mental heart problem. I just wanted to say that every time there's a rent increase, we lose friends and neighbors because they can't afford them. Some are moving out of state, some are having to give up their independence and move in with family members. For my husband and I, we thought this year was going to be our last year here. And we really like Rancho Cordova. We really do. But as of, we got a rent raise on January first. And so we've been, that would mark our three and a half years here in the park, and our rent has gone up a hundred and seventy-six dollars during that time, that three and a half years. And I don't want to move, I don't want to move. I don't want to lose more friends and more neighbors. And I certainly don't want them ending up homeless. We're lucky we have friends who are helping us, so we're able to stay here. Because literally, there's no place in Rancho Cordova, Sacramento, or any place in California we could afford to live. And I've lived in Cal, we both, my husband and I have lived in California for the majority of our lives. But thank you, city council, and to the staff. And I hope you still consider working something out and doing something. And if you need any, I sent more of a note, but if there's anything I can help in this process, please let me know.
Can I ask you a question for your rent increase? What percentage of your rent has been increased in the last three years?
Well, I did it on a, online because I'm not good with math. And what it said was it was a twenty-six point fifty-one percent increase.
Twenty-six in three years. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Autumn Eberhart. Autumn, I've unmuted you and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, this is Autumn Eberhart from Cordova Meadows. And I'd like to thank you all for getting this conversation started. The city should consider establishing rent control or other measures to help the mobile home parks. Lots of investment sites are talking about how hedge funds are purchasing these mobile home parks because, you know, they can't move them. So it's a great investment for them, or it's very expensive to move them. And so they're just dragging up the prices after they buy them, and it's pushing people out. So please don't consider just watching the rent raise because they're enacting something. Thank you.
Thanks, Autumn. That looks like that's it, right, Stacy?
Yes.
Okay. Council, questions for staff?
Stefan, could you tell us what sort of rent control any local jurisdictions have enacted on behalf of mobile home park residents?
Stefan, you're on mute.
Sorry, maybe I'm not understanding the question.
So in Sacramento County, does anybody have a mobile home? Res, uh, ordinance?
No, nobody in Sacramento County.
Does anyone in the surrounding counties have a?
They do. The jurisdictions that we contacted, I looked for ones that were close by or had more recent ordinances passed that would be a little bit more, I guess, more applicable. And Modesto was the closest one that I spoke with. There's a couple in the Bay Area. I spoke with Ukiah. I spoke with some in Southern California, as well as Humboldt County. But nothing immediately in Sacramento.
Yeah, this is a, you know, strikes me as a pretty crazy situation. Robert and I, and Helen and I have emailed back and forth about this over years now, I think. So I'm glad to get this discussion here. It seems like, in a lot of cases, people buy into this housing thinking, oh, it's very affordable, the price is not so high, I can, I can live here. And they don't factor in these annual rent increases. And then at the same time, there are these investment groups, real estate investment trusts, et cetera, that are acquiring mobile home parks. Because you do have this captive, vulnerable population that you can just increase the rent, increase the rent, increase the rent. If the value of the property goes down as a result, what does the owner care, right? I don't think there's any, is there ever any pain for the owner in that scenario? They're just looking for whatever the monthly income can be off of the property. So this is not a, in my mind, this is not a good choice of a place to live. And so that presents us with a real challenge. You know, I think the solution here, like other issues we've talked about that are similar to this, other rent control issues are a statewide solution ultimately. That's what you want. The state has set up the system that we're living with. They've engineered it. I think park owners have probably had enormous influence in how that has been set up and how it's been implemented. And local jurisdictions might be able to get into this mix, and we can look at that. But, you know, ultimately, the solution has to be something from the state. And I would think the, you know, composition of the legislature right now should be perfectly attuned to this issue, as they've already pursued rent control in other situations. So I'm a little surprised, frankly, that in the past, you know, five or six years, they haven't, they haven't taken this one on to a greater degree. But I appreciate staff's work here and interested in what my colleagues think about it.
Thank you, David. Siri, any questions for staff?
So, so I'm thinking about it from a two-pronged perspective, right? So first off, these are people, homeowners or mobile park owners that are in it to make some money, right? So they're renting it out to make money. And so, you know, we going in there and saying, you know, this is, we want to put a cap on that. We don't want you to have any profit, or whatever, it's kind of hard in this situation. That said, this really hits those that are fifty-five and above because now they are not in any place to make additional income. There's, most of them are on limited income. So I'm mostly looking at that part of the, that section of the community here to see. Stefan, have you seen anywhere where they're just restricting, at least on the mobile parks which have, which are restricted to people fifty-five and above? Is there a way that you can, you know, have a cap or rent control on that? Like either for people who age, take in that age range, or like the Mobile Country Club, which is comprised of people fifty-five and above?
So I might, I might look to our city attorney for maybe some more specificity on that one. But my understanding is there are ways to be flexible with the applicability of ordinances and could be something that we explore as far as age or some other criteria.
Yeah, absolutely. Would like immediate action and response on this because, anyway. On, yeah, on the Mobile Country Club, if there's something we could do for that particular club? And also, again, for others who are fifty-five and above, because it's the same hardship for them.
Thanks. Linda?
Yeah. So two things strike me. I think most of us get the periodic publication from the Golden State Mobile Homeowners Association. I actually probably haven't seen it in a while, but it used to come out maybe every six months, or maybe more frequently. It has always struck me that because that organization really kind of like the AARP, from my perspective, it's kind of like the AARP for mobile homeowners. And they really do have a lot of lobbying power. And I've never understood why they wouldn't try to get the basic protections of the Business and Professions Code that are applicable to renters, apartment renters, expanded to people who are in mobile home parks. Because it seems, it really seems that that's the issue. The fact that mobile home parks are a part of HCD as opposed to being under the, um, the governing laws of the Business and Professional, Business and Professional Code. So that would be one aspect. But the second aspect that they've written about in that publication often is the fact that some parks have managed to figure out how to buy their park away from the hedge funds so that the owners themselves, or the residents themselves, own this park. And if there were a way for us to facilitate that kind of thing for some of the, for some of the parks, then that's really something that ought to be considered as a part of this whole issue of, what do we do about rent control? And I'm not so concerned about code enforcement, although I do acknowledge that we have a couple of parks that need a significant amount of code enforcement, which kind of sort of dribbles over into the fact that this discussion is extremely multi-layered. Because on the one hand, you have the Mobile Country Club as an outstanding example. There is also a park on, um, Business Park Drive. And I can't tell you the name of it, but it's owned by, or has been owned in the past, by responsible members of the BIA. And those are parks, there's probably some on Mill Station Road that are owned, that are owned by some very respectable owners. And, but then also, we have a couple on Rudya that are really, seem to be owned by slum lords. So not one size fits all. And I'm not sure where the park on Bradshaw, where Ernie used to live before he passed away. I'm not sure where that one falls into this category. But there are multiple, there are multiple issues at play here. So it really isn't just a one-size-fits-all solution. And it takes a variety of actions. And I really do believe that the state of California, as David brought up, with all of the move to try to create affordable housing and the fact that our, our general plans or our housing elements are prohibited from doing anything that would convert what is currently affordable housing to market-rate housing, one would think that there's a lot of action needed at a variety of levels. And when you have a powerful lobbying organization, like the Golden State Mobile Homeowners Association, everybody needs to pitch in and get involved. These poor people who come and talk to us all the time don't seem to have the support of their umbrella organization. And that in itself is a problem from my perspective.
Thanks, Linda.
I realize it's a lot of different directions, but, but they're really, you know, we've dealt with this, or we've been on the fringe of this for at least sixteen of our eighteen or so years. And it's just not a one-size-fits-all solution.
Thanks. Well, I'd just, I'd make some comments here, too. You know, when we look at mobile homes, and I think David kind of said it, that the, the hope of buying one of these is that you're buying what's considered a naturally occurring affordable home, or a NOA. And there's, there's this idea that because it's not expensive to buy, therefore, it's not expensive to own. And that's true if you get a mortgage or you somehow, you know, have a nest egg and you use your money to do this, and then you go somewhere and it's three hundred dollars a month for your space. But if it's eight hundred dollars ten years later and your COLA from your social security is going up at three percent a year at best, you can see where the math gets bad really, really quick. And so we had, the lady, I believe it was Helen, that said that in three years of living there, she did her, her rent's up twenty-five percent. I'm guessing her income, probably even due from COVID, could have even gone down last year because of the COLAs and the price indexes and everything else that we were talking about. Linda's example about COOPS. I mean, I grew up, you know, before I moved to the Valley, to Davis, I grew up in Santa uh, I grew up in San Marcos where I believe one of the first co-op financing, um, purchases of residents buying their, uh, their park was. I believe it's one of the first in California, if not one of the first in the nation. Um, so they exist and I would really encourage staff to see if we can't work with some other folks to see if we can't come up with something. Cause I know even in San Francisco, they've pulled that off with multifamily dwellers as well. Um, but I will tell you that usually the first mechanism in order to make the purchase price of the park somewhat reasonable is that they implemented some sort of rent control first. So that somebody didn't look at it and go, the value of this thing is X because I can raise the rent eighteen or twenty-five percent a year, right? Um, and so if we want to facilitate more of these homeowners owning their own parks, which I think is a good thing, um, you have to get the owners of them out of the idea that exponential growth in rents is something that is doable. Um, the other thing that I think is interesting here and, and, uh, one correction, Linda, it's the Golden State Mobile Home Assos- Mobile Home Owners League. Um, and I know I've reached out to who was their former lobbyist. And I know, you know, lobbying the Capitol in the last year has not been as easy as people would imagine it used to be. Um, but they've been pushing these ideas and, and these concepts for a long time. Um, and I know we had conversations that had talked about rent controls in other ways and in other units. And I think the, the danger that I fear of rent control in multifamily housing and rental homes in general is a stiflement of development. Um, we have a housing crisis, we have issues and, and people pushing back when it comes to any type of housing built anywhere that isn't single-family homes. Um, and, you know, for a range of different reasons. Uh, we have things in California that prevent development. And that's one of the reasons we have a housing crisis. And it's one of the reasons that we're seeing exponential home value growth, which some people think is good if you own a home, if you're trying to buy one or you're trying to rent one, it's not so great. Um, but I think in this case and in this scenarios that we're talking about, we're talking about a fairly similar type resident and homeowner here that we're talking about that is usually senior citizens or disabled. They're usually on fixed incomes and they can't afford these rent increases. And this idea that I'm a homeowner and I have this asset, but it's on your land, therefore I'm stuck with you, right? If somebody raises the rent on my apartment, I can take my stuff and I can move somewhere else. These homes cannot be moved. Um, there's nothing mobile about a mobile home, especially a mobile home that's more than about ten years old. Um, that if you were to try to move one of these, they would fall apart. And it would cost a lot of money to put them back together. So in most instances, what the park is banking on is long-term that either the resident passes away or they give up on the house and either the, the, the owner of the park can seize the house or remove it and have somebody else put another one there and start the whole cycle over again, um, at the increased rents. Um, so I'm open to exploring more around some sort of rent control. Um, I do find it somewhat concerning that for the most part, we only hear from Gold Country, um, resident homeowners in this conversation. We also, I will say that I'm fairly surprised that we have gotten this far in this conversation. And I have never had one owner of a park reach out to me to plead their side of the case on this. Which I think is just, I cannot believe we've been talking about this for maybe a year and a half to two years, seriously talking about this, and I have never been contacted by an owner of a park. Um, but I will say that, and FISA I think pointed this out. Um, while we do have Gold Country, um, kind of on the eastern edge of the city, um, there's a bunch more of these on the western side of the city. And I'd be really interested to hear kind of their scenarios. Cause I know in a lot of these parks, there are renters living in these homes. Um, a lot of times because the, the, the somewhat elderly person that owns it has to move in order to keep it, they have to rent it to somebody that they can charge enough rent to keep up with, with the, the, the space rent. Um, but I would be, I'd be interested in, in exploring the, um, the rent control, um, the space rent control. The code enforcement, I'm a little bit more, I, I think our, our building department does a fantastic job, Joe. So this isn't a knock on you when I say this, but I'm a little bit disappointed in, in the fact that I came from a nonprofit that did a lot of, um, what FISA was talking about, the, the emergency home repairs and the rehab loans with Calhome Funds and federal home funds from HUD. And the guys that I had that were doing the specs and hiring the contractors and, and doing that work, were also the ones that were doing single-family home flips and, and a lot of other things. I, to me, I don't feel like that, like this is as much of a stretch. I, I get there's some certifications that we need to get too. But to me, it, it seems fairly doable. And maybe that's just me working with people that have done both of these types of projects and also had done multifamily. And, oh, by the way, that's the same five people that were working for me that could do any of these projects. Um, so I, I'm a little questioning like why this would be so hard from a code enforcement perspective. But I will say that when I hear people in Gold Country, which I would say is arguably, having been to many of these mobile home parks, by far the nicest, and I would say maybe the one off of Bradshaw would come in closer. I mean, I believe those are the only two gated ones that we have. Um, the ones that are ungated on Rootier and, um, some of the other areas, I would say, are in desperate need of code enforcement. Um, because HCD is fairly, um, I, they're, they're, they're just not there. Um, and, and when you go into some of those parks and you see the state of some of them, um, they, they, they are in desperate need of code enforcement. Um, but again, we don't, I, I, to hear it in Gold Country surprises me because when I, when I've been in that park, I've seen how nice it is comparatively to the other one. So to hear that and to think, what must the residents and owners and the other ones be thinking? Um, so I don't want to throw out the code enforcement conversation, but I think one over the other right now, I think is that we have an economic crisis on our hands. And we're going to have a bunch of senior citizens displaced if we don't act in some way. Um, and so I, I'd be interested in, in trying to approach something along those lines. Um.
So Donald?
Yeah?
I think, I think you're actually talking about, um, Mobile Country Club on, on.
I'm, I'm sorry, yes, Mobile Country, I'm saying Gold Country, yes.
Okay, and, and.
I'm, I'm speaking Golden State Mobile Home, Mo- Owner League.
Yeah, so not to be picky, it's, um, Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League.
There you go.
I'm sitting here with my.
Well, you're saying the association, I guess, no, it's an L and I couldn't remember the L on the rest.
No, it's, it's G S M O L.
Yeah.
So I'm sitting here with my file that actually dates to two thousand and seven because that's when Ernie, who's, who was on our planning commission, first really brought all this to our attention. And he lived, as I said, he lived off, uh, in the park off, on Bradshaw, south of Lincoln Village Drive. Um, there's, there's really a lot of literature and, um, um, history to this discussion. And, and I can't flip through an inch full of files right this minute and pull that out. Um, you're probably talking about Norma Bohannon, who used to live at Mobile Country Club and now, and, and as far as I know, she lives over in the one, um, uh, Centennial Estates or whatever it's called over by the, um, over by Power Inn. Um, she was the lobbyist for this district for, for years and years and years. And I'm sure Bob and his neighbors all know her. Um.
I was thinking of the one just after that, which is Brian Augusta, but yes.
Yeah, this is really a discussion, this is really a discussion worth, worth pursuing. And I suspect that we really ought to include, uh, our colleague Ken Cooley's office in this discussion. Um, but from Stefan's perspective, it would be helpful, uh, if he could identify where there are parks that the owners or that the residents were able to purchase, uh, purchase the park. Um, and what the mechanism that they used was. I know I've got some information in that, about that in this file because there've been articles written about that. But, um, that would be one important thing to know. Um, i- i- it is incredibly difficult to sell the unit that you're living in because I guess you have to have the permission from the, uh, from the park owner. And then you have to have extra permission to actually move the unit if somebody wants to buy it and take it to someplace else. And the whole thing gets incredibly complicated. And, um, we probably all need kind of a refresher in that whole process. Um, when you said you'd never been contacted by a park owner, neither have I, except for once. And this was way back at the beginning. As I said, um, on the north side of Rootier, uh, behind a, a lovely CMU wall is a, um, it's a park that was owned by, um, a very respectable board member at the BIA. And I don't know whether she and her family still own that. But it would really, I agree with you, it would be really nice if we would hear from some of these property owners who think there's a different perspective than the, the one the residents have. So.
Yeah.
I think this is a great discussion, it's a great start. But we've, um, need to get more into it in depth.
So I, I, Stefan, I don't know if you want to summarize. I'm hearing, I'm hearing, cat, if, if I'm not mistaken, a four oh to explore some sort of space rent control. I didn't really hear anybody else except for me really talk about the interest in code. But I did, I, I said it, but I don't think I heard anybody else say it. So do you think you have what you need here to move forward? Micah, Cyrus, Adam, I don't know if there were any other feedback you were hoping from council on this?
Um, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I think we'll, um.
No, go ahead, Micah.
Go ahead, sorry. No, I was actually going to suggest, um, a- as far as, um, repeating some of what we heard today as far as the direction, making sure we capture. If there's additional looks or additional information you want, make sure we capture all that additional research or information that, that you need to, um, um, you know, to make some decisions or make some, give some direction. So, um, I heard a few things as far as, and I'll let Stefan weigh in as well as far as things that, uh, that he heard. But, uh, mostly around information about, you know, the process for actually acquiring mobile home parks by the, the, um, uh, owners themselves and, and how that process works and examples of that. Um, maybe a little more information from, from mobile home park owners. Although I will say, I believe and Stefan can weigh in here, we did reach out to the mobile homeowners with surveys and, and different requests and calls and didn't get, uh, much of a response, um, from them.
You mean owners as in owning the homes or owning the parks?
Owning the parks.
Owning the parks.
Okay.
Owning the parks.
So you attempted to contact them and we're still not hearing from them?
Correct.
That's very helpful to know.
So there was an effort made both by phone and by emails to, to, to reach out and collect information from them and they were, uh, unresponsive. So, um, just, I, I want to make sure we capture if we come back for a further discussion, um, information that you want to see as part of that conversation. Uh, but generally I have heard and, and I will say, you know, kind of the, I, I agree with you, uh, Vice Mayor that, uh, our, our building folks and code folks are more than capable to figure out how to do code enforcement and building code for mobile home parks. But it is quite a process and still a little bit duplicative at the end of the day with the state, uh, even if we were to take over that responsibility. And so, um, I think that's part of the, you know, kind of maybe taking a more stronger role and, and trying to, uh, influence HCD on some of the different decisions and some of the different efforts, um, before taking, taking the, the plunge into, you know, full control and, and, and efforts around the, the code enforcement. But I am hearing some interest in, uh, looking at space rent, uh, space rent stabilization or control, um, options. And maybe next time we can bring forward some examples of, of, we didn't dig into all the different ways. Cause I think there's lots of different ways you could structure some of these programs. Um, and so if there is interest, that's what we'd like to hear is maybe coming back with some of those options, uh, that could be done, uh, if you're still interested in hearing additional things around, uh, rent stabilization.
Micah, um, could we, could, could you all touch base with, uh, Ken's office? Um, just to make sure that i- in case he's hearing the same thing from his constituents and, and lord knows they're.
So checking in on any state efforts or, yeah.
But, like, there certainly are mobile home parks in Citrus Heights. So if he's, um, actually trying, eh, eh, considering trying to, to do something about this, then we want to make sure that we're all working on the same effort and, and pooling our collective resources.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I would say from the code side, maybe we start there. And we say that, you know, w- w- we have concern, what are you going to do to address the HCD? See over time how that works. And if it's not working, I mean, it's kind of the, the same argument I would have with like parking your boat in front of your house. And there was this idea that just, just go and ban it. And it's like, well, have we really tried to use the tools that we have in front of us? So if the first thing is try to light a fire, fire under HCD and say that we have a problem and engage Ken and his staff, then sure, let's start there and then hold out that if, if we don't see anything, you know, we may have to take matters into our own hands.
Is there anything else, Stefan, in that conversation that I missed in that?
Um, no, I, I guess I, I would, um, to, to answer sort of that question about helping residents purchase their park, we did do some research into that. I think that, that was a question that came from council probably about a year ago. And so we did look into it. Um, we contacted, I think, I can't remember the specific organization's name. I think the acronym is USA. Um, but, and we, we did learn a lot of information about, um, the, kind of the circumstances and situations for, for residents to purchase their park. Uh, typically you, you want to, you, the park needs to be for sale to begin with. Um, you could reach out to property owners, but if it's for sale, that's sort of the, the trigger most of the time. Um, and then it, it's also important to take into consideration the park characteristics itself. If, you, you kind of need the right size of park for it to make financial sense for the residents as well as to have sort of that management capability within the park residents themselves. Um, so not every park necessarily is a great candidate for that. Um, but, uh, some of our city m- may meet those qualifications. I would, I would, I, I, Mike, I guess I would echo you sort of your question about what, what additional information, um, you know, specifically we could come back with, um, to make it a, you know, to make it a productive conversation.
So, I think, I, I, I think Micah asked that maybe the, the next follow-up meeting to this item would be exploring different structures of rent space control. Um, and what options may be before us, um, on that subject? Does that sound like something that the council was interested in?
Well, among other, among the other topics that we've talked about, making sure that we're, uh, coordinating with whether, whatever Ken might do or, or, or think about doing, um, uh, getting more information about the circumstances under which, um, uh, residents have been able to purchase. Um, uh, there's a variety of topics that we've discussed and Micah and Stefan pretty much identified them.
I, I, I think those are items for research that maybe can be brought back as a staff report. But there's also a, a decision that could be made by the council that I think if given options, there would be action to be taken at a policy level by the council. That's separate from some items that could be researched and, uh, I mean, maybe there's involvement with the city. It, maybe it's staff working with HCD on code and then, you know, researching as far as financing. I mean, that, that's really in, in the hands of the, of the homeowners and maybe the city is assists in, in structures of financing. But I, I don't know if that's a, a policy decision that could come before the council. So I think.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't want to quibble, but any way you look at it, this is something that, that, that needs a holistic solution, not just bits and pieces. So in order to make any kind of policy decision, we need to know more about the, the variety of aspects that are involved.
Catherine, anybody else want to weigh in? I just want to make sure that we're giving staff what they, what we want them to bring back to us. Maybe what we're not going to talk about next time. It doesn't mean that we're never going to talk about it, it just means what's the next thing that we should be talking about?
Yeah, I think the code enforcement discussion that you raised, Donald, is, uh, is interesting to me. Um, I can think of one park, I'm not sure it's included in our tally here, uh, because it involves not so much mobile homes as RVs sitting in a, in a spot. And I know that that particular park also has, I think, far higher than average police calls and other service calls. So it's sort of a problem area for us. Um, code enforcement there might, might have a role, but I'm not, I'm not certain. Code enforcement there might have a role, but I'm not, I'm not certain, I mean, I guess that's relatively complex, because HCD has always handled those, although in my view, not handled them very well or about very hands-on. You know, for decades, we've seen various charitable enterprises here try to assist mobile homeowners with remodel projects that are often far beyond the scope of what the volunteer organization could undertake, and.
I would agree.
That particular park is very problematic in that regard, there's a lot of very beaten up, broken down stuff there. So code enforcement-wise, I think we ought to look at what the upside could be in terms of dealing with some people who are probably living in not-so-great circumstances. This is very similar to what we did with, with sort of the lower-end apartments, right? When we bumped up our partnership with the apartment owners, and we did apartment inspections and really dealt with the slum lords.
I think Councilmember Sanders, if I can, there's a little bit of nuance difference, a little bit between apartments and mobile homes, where the mobile owners themselves own the units, and there are times when we might find ourselves in some awkward positions about a mobile home being in pretty bad disrepair, and the homeowner itself is not a park issue, this is.
That's right.
The person who owns the mobile home, and so it is a little bit of a difficult, tough position to be in for, you know, our code and building team at times, and so I think that's something to, you know, we consider as we look at this option, these options as well, as relying on and pushing on HCD holistically to do what they need to do, instead of kind of us, you know, jumping in, you know, with both feet in the water. And kind of what I'm hearing is, at least generally, more interest and discussion on the space control and moving forward some discussions there, and less on the code issue with some of those issues that we mentioned, that the priority being those and really focus on that. Obviously, we're always going to be working with, you know, kind of the teams and things to keep an eye on our mobile home parks, and if there's something that we think needs to be done from a code or neighborhood services or building standpoint, we can definitely undertake those items. But that is a, it is a difficult position to be in with some of these mobile home parks and the mobile homes themselves.
I would also say, I just Googled and found a list in California of resident-owned parks, and there's four in Sacramento County, there's one in Yolo, there's one in Placerville, so we may even reach out to them to see how they approached it. MHPHOA is the website I found, MHPHOA.com. The other thing I would say, David, having, like I said, I ran, let's see, Roseville, and I worked for a nonprofit that actually did this in Rancho at one point, but the end in West Sacramento, the average rehab, and this was probably five years ago now, the average rehab for a mobile home was 85 to 90,000, and that was before lumber costs and everything that we're talking about today. On average, 50% of the scopes that we would look at, it was cheaper to replace the unit than to repair.
What do you pay for a thing like, what do you pay for a mobile home?
It really depends on how old it is and how big it was, but I mean, a new two-bedroom, two-bath could, I mean, be well over 100,000.
So the stuff, there's stuff that they're turning out over on Old Placerville Road, so.
It really depends, Linda. Linda, you can get something so small that it's 40,000 or 50,000 or 30,000, and you can get something that's, I mean, they can build you a $700,000 home that you go put on the foundation and on 10 acres somewhere, wherever. So they can build you some really nice houses, you don't just get a single wide or a double wide, you can get four wides, there's all kinds of stuff that you can buy. So it's a very, it's a very unique product, but I'm just saying that the rehab costs and the code enforcement, what Mike is talking about, we go out there and we start saying you need to replace your roof and all these things, and we're dealing with, again, people on a fixed income that can't afford it. So if we don't come back with the resources to assist them, and those rehab sources are not endless, it is, you can put yourself in a very unique position as well.
Well, somebody did say rebuilding together will work on a mobile home, so.
It will, and I can tell you that when I, when I worked at a different bank, and we were looking to donate homes to nonprofits to just flip them, that we approached rebuilding together with a house and a couple other nonprofits, and they said, that's beyond our scope, we can't handle a home that would that much. And it ultimately went to a nonprofit that I left that bank to go work for, and we flipped the same house. So there are times that they will be offered homes and projects, and they can't do them. So I would agree that rebuilding together has a certain kind of dollar amount, and above that, it's just, it's not something that they, and they use contractors to do a lot of the work, but a lot of them, they, I mean, Habitat also has kind of a limit of how much of a scope they'll do. And then the ones I'm talking about that are using federal funds, when I, again, when I worked at Naval York Sacramento, we would do this in West Sacramento, and the average, the average was 80 to 90,000. We had a few that'd be 50, that was very rare, we had ones over 150,000, and it just got to the point, that's the scope to fix this thing that you bought 20 years ago, we could get you another one for 110. And so that was cheaper, and a 30-year deferred loan, and, you know, they never made a payment. And then the families had to figure out what to do with it later, but had a lien on it. So the rehabs on these mobile homes, again, these homes are not mobile, I really wish they'd come up with a different name, but if you tried to move a 20-year-old mobile home, it's going to fall apart on the highway, like, you cannot move these things.
You're right. That's why G S M O L calls themselves manufactured homes, not mobile homes.
Yeah, well, we could get into what manufactured is to modular, to a whole bunch of things. So I think, staff, I think you have direction on, there needs to be probably a further discussion on options for the council to consider when it comes to space rents, probably some more digging in on how we may assist these homeowners in purchasing their parks, if that is possible. And I think some more research around how we might be able to work with HCD to assist us in code enforcement.
And I think working with Assemblyman Cooley's office, I heard, as well, seeing what's happening at the state.
Yeah. Okay? Got what you need?
Got it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, council and the public and everybody for this, I know this has been a long time coming. Okay, with that, we will move on to item 13, council requests for future agenda items. Anybody got a hot, pressing idea right now?
Yeah, I have a question for Cyrus. On our to-do list, we have the electric chargers, electric charging stations discussion. Is that coming back to council anytime soon?
We have a special work session next Tuesday on the 20, is this the 24th? And that's potentially one of the items that we're considering for that day.
That should be very short.
Yeah. I think ultimately the question would be if the council is interested to pursue it or not, and then we can come back with the process and the implementation of it if the council is interested.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other items for agenda, future agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we are going to adjourn to closed session.
In memory of George Hudson Jr.
Thank you. Stacy, you got that for the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you in a few. Have a good night, have a good night to everyone else, and to those who might be waiting around for us to come back out of the closed session. Okay, it's 10:40 PM, let's go ahead and call this meeting back to order, and with that, we'll ask the city attorney or the city manager to report out from closed session.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor. The city council met in closed session this evening to take up one item of anticipated litigation. The city council received updates from and provided direction to its litigation council. Council took no other reportable action.
If we have nothing else before us, I will call this meeting adjourned at 10:41. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Good evening. Good night.